Engaged in what's going on in the city. If I could get everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation by Pastor Kirk Welch of Cornerstone Bible Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Father, we're so thankful to you for our city, so thankful to be a part of the Westfield community and to be united together in this way, and we're blessed to live where we live and to have what we have, and we just pause right now to recognize that you are the giver of all good things. We ask God for your help tonight for this meeting to go well. We pray for wisdom for the council, thankful for the members of the council and how they serve this community. We pray that you would guide them. We know, God, that you are the one who is the source of all wisdom and truth, and so we humbly cry out to you for mercy and strength and help. We pray that our city would flourish, that every single member of this community would thrive because they're a part of Westfield. Again, Lord, we are thankful to you for your kindness and goodness, thankful most of all for your Son, Jesus Christ, and your provision of him to be the solution to our sin, and we rejoice, God, in all of your blessing and favor upon us. And again, just ask that you would bless tonight's meeting in particular. In Jesus' name, amen.
I'd be remiss, Pastor Welch, not to thank you for your decades of service to a church. Thank you very much.
President Tam, would you like to run the meeting, please?
Thank you, Mayor. May we please open up the meeting with the presence of a quorum?
Noah Heron.
Here.
Chad Huff.
Here.
Victor McCarty.
Here.
Patrick Tam.
Here.
Kurt Wanninger.
Present.
John Dart.
Here.
Joe Deppner.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have the approval of the minutes from the July 14th, 2025 meeting, assuming everyone's had the opportunity to review those. Need a motion in a second.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from July 14th of 2025.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor Wanniger, seconded by Councilor McCarty, seeing no other discussion, may we call the roll?
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The next item of business is the approval of claims, assuming everyone's had the opportunity to review those, need a motion in a second.
Make a motion to approve the claims for July 28th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor Wanniger, seconded by Councilor McCarty, seeing no other discussion, may we call the roll?
Kurt Wanniger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
We're gonna have one slight change to the agenda this evening. We have our next great class of firefighters and their families here this evening, so we're gonna welcome Mayor Willis and our chief, our fire chief, to do our official swearing in. Mayor?
And I see a few of you have already gotten started on the classic firefighter mustache. It's good to see. As mayor, I get the honor to do a lot of fun and exciting things, but there is nothing I take more joy in than swearing in those men and women who serve our community on a daily basis. You, 12, I believe it is, is it not, 12? 11, you 11, will put your lives on the line every day for our city when you put on your uniform, and I can't say thank you enough on behalf of myself, the council, the residents of Westfield for your sacrifice and your service to our community. Westfield is a great place to live because we have men like you who are willing to raise your hand and do what you do, so thank you. With that, I'll have you all raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am the State of the City.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, uphold, and defend.
That I will support, uphold, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
Execute the duties assigned to me.
Execute the duties assigned to me.
As a member of the Westfield Fire Department.
As a member of the Westfield Fire Department.
For the city of Westfield.
For the city of Westfield.
To the best of my ability and always in accordance.
To the best of my ability and always in accordance.
With existing law and policies.
With existing law and policies.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations. Chief, would you do us the honor and say a few words?
First and foremost, thank you. Wouldn't be possible without the men and women in the community that support the things that we do, the administration and the council for allowing us to have this opportunity. We're very grateful. This time, I'd like to dismiss these gentlemen. We can continue on with our evening.
We have great leadership in our fire department, and from those of you unaware, the last four years, all of our firefighters and our recruit classes have passed on their first attempt We're gonna immediately go into residents that wish to address the council. at EMS exam, and frankly, we have some of the finest trainers that other fire departments in our area also rely on, and those are comprised of mostly our leadership in our fire department, Just a quick refresher on council rules and so forth. which is absolutely fantastic. So as we kind of refresh the room here, I think some others are joining us, so we'll Everyone has three minutes. It's not a Q and A session. You have three minutes to talk, say your piece, what have you. We've always kept it respectful. It's usually passionate. People have different viewpoints. We respect all of them. If someone does get out of a hand, law enforcement can remove you. It's never happened. Don't expect it to happen. We're not at, not certain cities. just pause here for a little bit. I'll just leave that unsaid, but at the same time, we welcome all comments, and would greatly encourage you, if you haven't signed up, please do. If you haven't, just come on up after the fact. Once people that have been, have already signed up, welcome anybody to speak for the full three minutes as well. We do keep track of time, but again, you could sign up Kevin Todd, and I think we can also pass out some forms as well, but we welcome everyone to make comments. Just ask that they are respectful, so law enforcement doesn't have to do law enforcement things, which we never have and don't plan on doing so this evening either. So with that, Director Todd, who's our first person this evening?
Yep. I apologize in advance if I butcher names. It's certainly not my intent. Nicole Colborne.
Oh, right there.
Are back to everybody?
Nicole, we just, we just ask you to state your name and your address, and then you can rip into it.
Okay. I'm Nicole Colborne. I live at 218 Blackberry Court in Westfield in Mulberry Farms, and I'm so embarrassed to be up here, so thank you for your patience. You won't have to arrest me unless I start telling bad jokes.
That's usually the mayor, but that's okay.
Oh, okay. So I just want to show my support of, I'm okay with the golf carts on the roads. I personally wouldn't want to drive one and go be opposing a car or something like that, but I think that it's everyone's choice. I am strongly opposed to them on paths and trails. I think that one of the big benefits of this town is its peace and enjoyment of nature that we're preserving around all of this development, and I think that this is something that we should not step too far forward in allowing them everywhere and then think that we're going to take them back. Once you give something, it's very difficult to peel it back, so I just hope everybody really takes that into consideration. I appreciate, as I read through what is being proposed, that there has been thought put towards the insurance, the licensing, things like that, but there again, there's going to be an accident, and that's what worries me so much with kids, with people on the streets, with, so I just really want us all to be very, very thoughtful with this, and I appreciate everyone. I'm a longtime reader of Next Door, first time speaker, so thank you for everybody who also showed up, and I look forward to hearing everyone's opinions, so thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. I was remiss to, just to make sure people under, Nicole, are you all squared away?
No.
Okay. I was remiss to not mention, there's no golf carts under what will be proposed this evening going to be considered on the Monon Trail whatsoever. There'll be a slight, there's Midland Trail access that has been Midland Trail access for eight, eight-plus years, give or take. There is a slight extension between Gray and Cary Road, and a slight extension around the library that will be potentially considered this evening, but nothing, nothing on the other side, the west side of US 31 whatsoever on the Midland Trail, so just wanted to make sure people were aware of that as well. Our next speaker?
Yep. Chris Bluto, and on deck will be Jonathan Kreider.
Hello, Chris Bluto. I live at 16438 Lakeville Crossing in Countryside. I agree with everything the previous speaker said. I think from what I've read and heard and talked about with people, safety, safety, safety is the main concern, and I understand that we've had some things in place, but enough of us out there have talked about the things we see, and there doesn't seem to be a great deal of concern to that, and it's kind of been pushed aside, so what I'm here to say is, I support the ordinance only as far as having a very vigorous way to go about enforcing it, and I've seen that this city does not do those types of things when it comes to these soft things. Monon and 161st Street is a main example. Plenty of chances to enforce that, set a tone, whatever, never happened. It's a, it's a problem. It's still, still an issue, and I know, now we're gonna spend millions of dollars to correct that, and we didn't even really put a good effort into trying to enforce it. And I don't want to see a bouncing ball between the police department and the city saying, well, it's your job to do it, and you didn't, but you didn't put it in the, in the, in the labeling, and I don't see that in there. Out front, there's three carts out here. I understand that the registration has been suspended, but I only see one with a sticker. That's their leverage, but I don't know where the state would say, hey, we're dealing with some changes, we're gonna suspend registration of all vehicles in the state, so, but that little placard is less than two inches by two inches. If somebody runs, you know, almost runs somebody all over in a path or a street, you're not gonna report that in. What's one of the first things that a police officer asks you? Did you get a license plate number? So if you're gonna expand this, and we're growing into a city of supposed to be like 90,000 by 2030, you better have some ways to vigorously enforce this and make people feel like it's being done safely so that their concerns are being addressed. And one other thing regarding the fine, I saw that it was $100. If it's unregistered, that's the same as it is if you get it registered, so you're, you're almost like, I won't bother even getting registered, because I'll just wait till I get fined. So you need to do a much better job on leveling the fines up. It is a vanity type of thing that we're doing here. People don't need a golf cart. They want golf carts. So if you can afford one of those, you know, you should be able to afford the penalties that go along with it so that we can keep our community safe, so, so that's, that's my two cents on, on just, please, whatever you do, make sure that you do a higher level enforcement and make sure that our police are on board with being able to budget and, and enforce that as well.
Thank you, Chris.
Jonathan Kreider, followed by Melissa Bruce.
Just a little nervous about coming up here, but my name's Jonathan Kreider. I live at 4533 Walcott Drive in Westfield. I ride the trails every day, pretty much. I'm one of the bicyclists that call out like you're supposed to. I've, I'm not, I'm not totally against having golf carts on the trails, but what I'm seeing now is we've got people, young kids riding e-bikes, and they're going at top speed. I've encountered them several times lately. Some of them look very young to be riding e-bikes like that, and the golf carts, I've had a couple pass me on the right and scare me to death. I never hear them honk. I never hear them call out to your left, to your right. Those are things that I see with bicyclists also. I always call out to your left, to your right, so I don't scare people that are walking on the trails. I do have some people that jump, but then other people say, thank you for letting me know you were there, and I said, I'm sorry I scared you, but, you know, so that's my two cents. I, I am not a totally, like I said, I'm not totally against it. I've actually emailed the mayor right after he took office. We, he emailed me back within 30 minutes. I appreciated that very much, and I think that's, that's all I've got to say. I just want to be sure that, that if we're gonna do this, they all follow the rules, and I know that's hard to enforce, because like I said, I see bicyclists that pass me, never say a word, and scare me to death and almost fall off my bike. So anyway, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate it.
Melissa Bruce, up next, Nancy Abbott.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council. Excuse me, I'm nervous. Hey, I can wipe the whole thing out if you want me to. That will end the whole evening. I just want to thank you. I am opposed, and I read the email, and I say this with all sincerity. It sounded like somebody had something and we didn't have it, and now we gotta go have it, like we're five years old. We're not a golf cart community. Maybe we are, and I missed the memo when I moved here, but for the handful of golf carts I've seen, there just haven't been that many. The email also said it was inequitable. There is a lot of inequity. US Council members know that there's inequity. There's food inequity. There's health inequity. There's a lot of shortages everywhere, and we're up here talking about golf carts. So what I want to say is, when there's an accident, because you push us through when a lot of us don't want it, and there's an accident, please remember that. Please remember it's gonna be inequitable when we have to rip out money for the, for the insurance or the hospital bill. And I'm sincere when I say this, because I love golf carts. I play golf, but the golf cart was meant for the golf course. I moved from Florida. They have golf cart communities. That's what they were specifically designed for, was a community. That's not us, and I saw that all the golf carts out here got here just fine tonight on the road. They didn't even use the trail, but once you give up a little trail, we start giving up a lot of trail. I know how it works. I'm an old curmudgeon. I can say that from the bottom of my heart. I love the people who play golf, and I know how much fun it is to drive a golf cart, but it's not fun when you're on your bike and you're trying to fight it. Like the other gentleman said, you know, you're out riding and on your left, on your left. There's a lot of people don't know the rules for that, but I don't want to get killed. I don't want to get maimed, and it's just not fair to the rest of us who walk and bike. Most of us have cars. We all get around just fine. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Melissa.
Nancy Abbott, followed by Chadwick Collins.
Is Nancy, oh, I see it. Yep. Oh, no, that's quite all right, Nancy. No. Yeah, she did. Nancy, I think you were here at our last meeting as well. Good to see you again.
I'm Nancy Abbott. I live in Willow Creek, just off of State Road 32. I'm the person that was almost hit head-on by a golf cart on Durham Road next to, parallel to Kroger on the 5th of July. That golf cart was coming not 25, but as fast as a golf cart could go on July 5th at 11 o'clock at night. This golf cart was not in his lane, it was in mine. If I'd not been in a suit, I probably would have killed everybody in that golf cart, and I'll never forget it. We need rules, but I think we're moving too fast. I'm for golf carts. We have all these beautiful senior living communities. We don't want to stick them in those senior living communities, and that being granny-dropping places. We want them to get out and see Westfield and, and maybe not use the golf carts, make it a place to walk, but I used to walk those trails before I had to have this new hip, and there was bicycles that came along beside me all those times. The golf carts don't belong on Monon Trails and places like that, but I think we're moving too fast. They need to be regulated, they need to be inspected, but are we gonna ask our police department that's already overworked to do that? We need to work this out. There's places that are examples, like Cicero, they seem to be doing really well, and they're our neighbors. There's places in Colorado that have a lot of senior living places and trails to walk that maybe we need to look at other places that are doing really well, and it also could be a revenue for us. We're always looking for revenue. I think we're moving too fast. They're a thing of the future, and we want to be the future, but I just think we're moving too fast. Yes, we want golf carts, but not right now. We need to move slow and make it part of Westfield and make people want to do it right.
Thank you, Nancy.
Chadwick Collins, followed by Roger Dykes.
Chadwick Collins, 3128 Granby Way, also in Willow Creek, the shady part off of Cary there, Crafty Branch. Your clock's not working, by the way, or it's not starting. Okay, cool. Oh, no, it's fine. Obviously, I'm not an avid user of the trails, but looking at me, but I do want to point out some things that I think structurally is wrong with the ordinance right now. There was some presentation shared by a councilperson that shared some definitions. Our current ordinance, 1850, says it doesn't allow modified golf carts. However, the current ordinance is proposing that all golf carts have headlights, taillights, turn signals, so if someone's in possession of a golf cart and they don't have those features, they can actually get those features added, because then it becomes a modified golf cart. So essentially, you're saying those, those items have to come from the manufacturer of origin and not be added after the fact. Second of all, there's also another definition that says it's a vehicle designed to carry golf carts, and observing the carts that did make it to the meeting tonight, they don't have the clear structure that you see on golf course golf carts that would be made to hold golf clubs, so there's obviously some language around definitions even within the ordinance that are lacking. Also, as Mayor Willis has pointed out in some of his State of the City addresses, we're a little behind when it comes to the infrastructure to support our population. I would count this as part of that problem. We don't have the infrastructure in place to allow carts on the trails yet. They're not marked, you don't have the signage, we're still working out the rules, so I think this is one of those cases where we want to have a party and we're ready to bake the cake, but we haven't checked and seen if we've got the eggs and the milk yet. So I think it's a great concept. I think it still needs to be fleshed out, but on those two primary things of not having the signage ready, not having the infrastructure in place, as well as there's some conflicts with current ordinance definitions and the language we're proposing, I think you're gonna have to hold off and pass them. Thanks.
Thank you, Chadwick. Appreciate it.
Roger Dykes, followed by Mike Rokio.
I'm Roger Dykes. I live at 4431 Miller Way in Brookside. I rise in support of surpassing the ordinance as written. I think it's a step towards, it's just a step, though, a step towards defining the legal use of golf carts, which is what I want to do. With that, I'd like to tell you a story. I own a house on Lake James, it's a thousand acre lake up in northeast Indiana. We had a pontoon boat, we cruised around the neighborhood, around the edge, and we watched the seasons change, and we watched the houses being built and yes, torn down on the lakes and new houses to be built, and that's what we wanted to use the golf cart for, though, that's what we bought it for. So I just would encourage you to link up things, because I go so far and then I hit a speed limit that's not 25, it's 30, and so then I'm stopped and then getting blanked at someplace. So the map's good, but we need to think in terms of linking things up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roger.
Mike Rokio, followed by Edward Roblowski.
How's it going? I'm Mike Rokio. I live at 4686 Pristine Court in Brookside. Anybody who knows me here, can I turn around and just talk to everybody? No? Oh, all right. So I'm totally in support of everything this ordinance is. I like the increased regulations, the policing of it. It really quells all concerns that I've heard. I've heard a lot of things opposed tonight. I think some of those things are just misinformed. Somebody mentioned something about the city having to pay hospital bills, which is not gonna happen, and that's why they're insured. That'd be like the city having to pay a hospital bill because somebody got in a wreck on Cary Road. It doesn't happen, so I think that's a little misinformed there. A couple other things I think we're misinformed, but I, somebody's mentioned before that, something about vanity, and I think that's kind of a major issue here for the opposed. I think there's some, a little bit of resentment, a little bit of, I don't know what it is, but disguised as safety concerns, and that's all it really is. We can have golf carts, because we want to have golf carts. Saying they don't belong anywhere other than the golf course is like saying a Ferrari belongs nowhere other than a racetrack. You know, if you want to have a cool car, you can afford it, do it. It's America, and it's what makes our city great in a lot of ways. There's a sense of community with the golf carts. Just this weekend, we didn't want to feed the kids, or, no, we wanted to feed them, but we didn't want to cook for them. And...
I've been there, don't worry about it.
So, you know, we were out on the golf cart just going down to a neighbor's to say hi, and my wife said, let's just go to Greek's, pick them up a pizza. We went to Greek's, picked up pizza, somehow we wound up in Something Splendid, buying things, and then went back the next night because the kids were mad that we didn't take them with us. So there's an economic impact to this. Most of you guys up here know me. I'm a home builder in the area, and I can't tell you how many houses I've sold, and, you know, we sell on the higher end. I haven't sold a house under seven figures in probably 10 years, and a huge selling point is the golf carts going to downtown Westfield. I get every customer of ours gift certificates to Chiva and Italian House and Nylas and everywhere down there, and they go down, love it. We've had people, developers from Nashville come up, friends of friends who live in Bridgewater, and they said, this is the coolest thing. We love going on the trail. We love going down to Italian House, and now he's implementing that in his communities in the suburbs of Nashville. So it's progression, it's here, and I think we should keep, keep things moving forward. It's just the way things are, and it's a nice part of our community. I'm done.
Thank you, Roger.
Edward Roblowski, followed by Lisa Hotel.
That's a nice job on that whole Rob-
I think there's some, a little bit of resentment, a little bit of, I don't know what it is, but disguised as safety concerns. And that's all it really is. We can have golf carts because we want to have golf carts. Saying they don't belong anywhere other than the golf course is like saying a Ferrari belongs nowhere other than a racetrack. You know, if you want to have a cool car and you can afford it, do it. It's America and it's what makes our city great in a lot of ways. There's a sense of community with the golf carts. Just this weekend, we didn't want to feed the kids, or we wanted to feed them, but we didn't want to cook for them. And...
I've been there. Don't worry about it.
So, you know, we were out on the golf cart just going down to a neighbor's to say hi and my wife said, "Let's just go to Greek's, pick them up a pizza." We went to Greek's, picked up pizza. Somehow, we wound up in something splendid, buying things. And then went back the next night because the kids were mad that we didn't take them with us. So, there's an economic impact to this. Most of you guys up here know me. I'm a home builder in the area and I can't tell you how many houses I've sold. And, you know, we sell on the higher end. I haven't sold a house under seven figures in probably 10 years. And a huge selling point is the golf carts going to downtown Westfield. I get every customer of ours gift certificates to Chiva and Italian House and Nylas and everywhere down there and they go down, love it. We've had people, developers from Nashville come up, friends of friends who live in Bridgewater and they said, "This is the coolest thing. We love going on the trail. We love going down to Italian House." And now, he's implementing that in his communities in the suburbs of Nashville. So, it's progression. It's here. And I think we should keep things moving forward. It's just the way things are and it's a nice part of our community. I'm done.
Thank you, Roger.
Edward Roblowski, followed by Lisa Hotel.
That's a nice job on that whole Roblowski thing you got going there. I would like to ask the council if I could maybe pass out a first grade worksheet for you to complete. My name is Edward Roblowski. I'm a medical physicist. I live at, I reside at 16950 Joliet Road, Westfield, Indiana. I've been a resident for 19 years here in Westfield and I am the owner of Photon Measurements Plus LLC. I asked the team up there, council, to complete a first grade worksheet and we'll get to that in a minute. It will be graded. Just put your name, the date, and return back to me. While you're doing that, I'm going to ask you to raise your hand. I'm going to give a brief introduction to you and you've got to figure out who you are. There's a former vice president of Delta Faucet. No? Isn't that Mr. Dart? Oh, yeah, there he is. Okay. A 2015 Huntington University rags-to-riches success story? Put him up really high so we can see. We have undergrad degree from Michigan University, law degree from IU. You got that backwards, but that's probably me. Mr. Dubner and Mr. Tam, experience with government, working for former Mayor Steve Goldsmith, Dave McIntosh and Indiana former Governor Mitch Daniels? Perfect. Doing great, guys. A 2006 IU grad in biochemistry, worked at Eli Lilly, now business owner for Urban Perfect. And then, we have graduated with honors from Business Administration and owner of CSI Signs. And then, a BS in Life Science and MBA with 30 years as project management. Perfect. And then, we have somebody here, former United States Marine with service to our country. And for that, sir, I thank you. So, what I'd like to talk about with this quiz, I expect all you with all of your illustrious background and expertise to get 100% on the first grade worksheet. There was an article that came out in the recent Current and the mayor stated that I'm a data guy. He said, "There were 65,000 people in Westfield the last census. There was about 64,900, so we round up." And there were, of that though, there was 37,333 adults, which means 27,567 have, really don't have a say in what we're talking about with the golf carts, which is what I'm here to talk about tonight. He said, "There's little evidence that the golf carts would be a safety hazard." But, my point to you gentlemen and the people in this room, that there is a very, I agree that it is a very, very small percent, .001% that someone's going to be injured by a golf cart with a head injury or major trauma, but there's still going to be an injury. And if that .001% is you or your daughter or your grandchild or your grandson or anyone that you love, then it's 100%. It works sort of like cancer. It's the same thing. When someone gets exposed to ionized radiation, the individual has a .001% chance of getting, developing a cancer later on in life. However, it's that 1%, that .001% if it's you, it's 100%.
Thank you, Ed. You have three minutes, so thank you very much. Our next speaker?
Lisa Hotel, followed by Bill Kirsch.
Hoddle. I told you I would butcher, so I might... It's okay. No worries. Am I ready? Okay, I can go. Okay, so tonight, I have been studying golf carts and I want to come with you guys with facts. Over 15,000 golf cart accidents per year, over 600 deaths per year. More than half of the golf cart accidents I just mentioned are from adolescents, 12 and under. More likely have brain injury or traumatic spine injuries. People don't come here to Westfield to buy golf carts or come here to Westfield because of golf carts. They come here because we are safe city because of our police department. They come here because of our parks, our amazing school system and our amazing trails. They don't come here for the golf carts. Only 5% to 7% of people actually have golf carts in the city. So, the majority of people, which I believe we've had over 300 emails to the city council, are against this. 40% of accidents are elderly. 65% are men. 35% are women. Most neighborhoods locally around here are 20 mile an hour speed limits. However, you want 25 mile an hour speed limits with kids? I don't know if you guys are watching, but there was a little girl running up and down this aisle earlier. That little girl can sprint out so easily behind their parents and a golf cart at 25 miles an hour will kill that little girl that was here tonight. Just a little bit wider of a path than this. Is it really worth adding these trails for the less than 5% to 7% of the Westfield residents to have their fancy golf carts? I don't care if they own them, but we're not, we do not have the infrastructure at this point in time to be driving them, especially at night when there's no lights on the trails. Yes, they have headlights, but guess what? People are walking and they may not see them in a sharp turn. So, and I also want to make point to the changes in the new proposal. You've taken out Class C infractions. You've lowered the rates for people being fined. What punishment is $200 to these people that can afford $8,000 to $10,000 golf carts? The city police right now are strapped and they are not on the trails now. What makes you think in November they're going to be on the trails? I can tell you how many bikes, e-bikes and golf carts that I see now with women, men and their babies. Just this last week, I saw a woman in a golf cart and her husband was driving and she was holding an infant. If a car hits that golf cart, that child will die. There's so many instances where we have to put a break on this, do a little bit better a job and then come back to the table. So, I would like to see some of the changes made before we make even close to making this possible. So, safety first is the key. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Could you just, for the record, just so, we have it for record, just state your full name and your address as well, just so we have it?
Yes, I am Lisa Hoddle, 321 East Pine Ridge Drive.
Thanks, Lisa.
Bill Kirsch, followed by Brian Simons.
And for those, when your name's called, I think Mr. Simons is next. If you just want to kind of come forward, just so we're kind of being a little bit quicker. Thank you. Mr. Kirsch?
Yes, Bill Kirsch, 205 Daringer Avenue, Westfield. My second time up here about this issue back in May, so I'm not going to bore you with some of the same stuff I said before. I do want to correct something. People online especially say, "Bill hates golf carts." I drive golf carts for Westfield welcome. I've been to Colts camp all but one day so far. There's nothing more fun than trying to drive five 300-pound-plus offensive linemen 1,000 yards from the event center over in the fields. So, I don't hate golf carts. I don't want them on the trails, though. Those trails were built in '08 and I think in Midland in '12 for pedestrians, cyclists, runners, no motorized vehicles. In fact, there used to be signs up there that said, "No motorized vehicles allowed." I looked at this new version of the ordinance, found a couple of kind of odd things. First of all, I found out that there's going to be another ordinance from the Parks Department, which is going to be more in-depth as far as things like hours that the golf carts can be out there. Well, I thought, "That's kind of odd. Why is the Parks Department doing this?" And I thought, "Oh, yeah, because guess what? Our named trails are linear parks. They are part of the Parks Department. They run those things." But, yet, this ordinance says the parks are going to be exempt. I mean, they're going to be part of the places where golf carts can't go. Such a big contradiction right there. How do we know that someday they won't have the Monon back on? I mean, there's a big development going to be going on at 199th and the Monon. If you look at it, that development's got a golf cart parking lot. Now, why would the developer put that on there unless he was pretty darn sure that one day, there's going to be golf carts going through that area? Exhibit A of this ordinance, it didn't get posted online till about 2:00 this afternoon. Why not? You know, was there a bunch of changes made? It's a map that shows places where you can drive and so on. One of the places listed on there is the Natalie Wheeler Trail. The Natalie Wheeler Trail on the ordinance is a place that's not listed as far as golf carts go. Another contradiction. Our neighbors Sheridan, Cicero, Noblesville, Carmel, they all have a golf cart ordinance very, very similar to this with one exception. Not a one of them allows golf carts on their pedestrian trails. Even the state of, the state now, not the city, the state of South Carolina had an ordinance going into effect just last month because the cities weren't evidently doing enough jobs. The state stepped in. They would have had a lot of issues with golf carts, including one fatality. So, they've got an ordinance statewide and guess what? Just like here, or just like the others I mentioned, golf carts are not allowed on the trails, pedestrian trails. Again, I don't have a thing against golf carts. I just don't want them on the trails. And I think you can tell by the comments so far tonight and online, the majority of us don't. And that's hopefully, when you think about that, you'll vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirsch.
Brian Simons, and up next, Mark Grimm.
Good evening, council. Brian Simons, 16217 Chancellors Ridge Way. Up here today, 100% in favor of the golf carts, contrary to a previous speaker. One of the main reasons I relocated my family to Westfield is because of the golf carts, in addition to obviously the schools, the trails and all the great things about Westfield, public safety, et cetera. So, in addition to that, my parents are half-time residents in the villages in Florida, a golf cart community. Echoing Mr. Rokio's stance earlier, it does build a tremendous sense of community, one of the many reasons we love Westfield. I've stand here in front of you probably three or four times talking about a development. We're bringing a development to downtown Westfield and I've joked, but it's kind of not a joke. One of the main reasons we put it there is I selfishly like to drive a golf cart to work. We've been enjoying the trails and the legal ordinance that we've been under for the past five years with a golf cart and have had zero issues. And I think with a lot of thoughtful consideration that you've put into date, I think scaling back the ordinance from where it was to begin with has shown responsibility on the council's behalf and I fully support the golf cart and continue to enjoy and build this community uniquely from setting us apart from Carmel and Fishers and Noblesville and our neighbors. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Mark Grimm, followed by Lisa Wilkin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council. My name is Mark Grimm. I live on 17316 Puntledge Drive, Westfield, born and raised. I wanted to start off in response to some of the previous comments here tonight, just to get the numbers straight. I'm a bit of a walking encyclopedia, so I wanted to point out to the real estate gentleman back here, the number of million-dollar homes as of the last figure that I saw is about 4% of Westfield's population or Westfield's properties. That is coincidentally, almost exactly the number of households in Westfield by national average that would possess a golf cart. So, I think it's safe to say that that is not the majority of the population. A little bit about me, just as background. I'm an IT worker. I work in information security. I stare at logs all day. I do a lot of data management, data analysis. Mr. Mayor, I know you firmly believe that you have performed a risk analysis, but I would like to inform you that a risk analysis is not just identifying a risk and attributing a percentage to that risk, a risk of incidence. It's also looking at the impact. And I believe that, you know, for those of us who've heard at various points, this is an ordinance that's been in place for an extended period of time. We haven't had an incident. I would just like to call attention to the question of what happens if there is and what is the severity. I would also like to point out, you know, I obviously do not feel alone coming here tonight. There's been a lot of opposition on this point. The question may arise, how many people, as a percentage of our population, have voiced an opinion on this? The numbers would indicate if we're at 63,000 or 65,000 people, if you take out about 25% to 30% as, you know, adolescents, those under 18, who really do not have a say in this. And you look at, you know, the incidence of comments, there's over 340, 350 emails that have come in on this topic. If we assume that 60% of those are married individuals that, you know, share beliefs with their spouse, that is close to 1% of Westfield's population. When is the last time that 1% of our population has voiced an opinion on such an issue with 75% opposition and been dismissed as a small, you know, group in our community? I would also like to finish out, I guess, with a few quotes. To quote Congressman, or Councilman Dart, the introduction to this ordinance on May 12th, he mentioned, "If a response from the residents is positive enough to bring it to council, we would do that. What is not stated is if the response to this ordinance is negative, will it be withdrawn from council?" I think that you cannot have one without the other, if you are being truly honest with yourselves. And Mr. Mayor, you stated, "My vision for Westfield is to be uniquely Westfield. What we do fits us as a community and who we are as residents." I've heard a lot of residents speak tonight. I've seen comments online, social media.
Mr. President, it's been three minutes.
And I would just like you to bring those into full consideration in the decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Lisa?
Yep. Lisa Wilkin, followed by Jack McKenna.
Hello. My name is Lisa Wilkin. I live at 213 Beechwood Drive. I've been a resident in Westfield since 1999. I chose to live in Hamilton County. I'm a born and raised Hoosier. I'm a United States Air Force veteran. I wanted to live in a healthy community. And so, Westfield has long promoted itself as a healthy, active community, a place where family, cyclists and walkers can safely enjoy our beautiful parks and trails. I refer to Westfield as New Westfield and Old Westfield as someone who likes to ride my bike. Old Westfield was, cars looked out for you. New Westfield, there are certain streets, Hoover Street, East Street, North Union Street. You can't ride your bike on safely anymore. I choose to ride my bike in the evenings at like 9:00 at night because there's not as many people on the road. We choose not to ride our bikes on the trails anymore because of the incidents of other cyclists going too fast, because our trails aren't patrolled properly. And so, that's why this ordinance concerns me. Golf carts weigh between 900 and 1,100 pounds and that's without passengers. When you add the variable of speed, even at the low speed that this ordinance has been reduced to, that impact can cause a severe, longstanding injury. And so, many of us walk dogs on expandable leashes. That's a hazard. We've heard talk about toddlers here. And now, you know, e-bikes are a problem on the trails because our trails aren't patrolled. Our trails were designed for human-powered movement, not motorized traffic. We already permit registered golf carts on city streets with certain speed limits. There's no compelling reason to push them onto our trails. In fact, the number of golf cart owners in Westfield is extremely small compared to the thousands of residents who walk, run and bike on these trails every day. This is not about convenience for a few. It's about the safety and quality of life for many. And who will enforce these rules? Do we really expect our already-stretched police force to have to be patrolling and monitoring our trail-based golf cart usage? It's unrealistic and frankly, it's absurd to add one more task to them to have to do and take them away from keeping our city safe. If we claim to be a community who supports wellness and sustainability, then let's prove it and by protecting our trails and not motorizing them. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jack McKenna, followed by Tony Nacowicz.
Hello. I live at 3312 Heathcliff Court in Westfield, sort of right behind the Krogers at Cary Road and Highway 32. I moved, my wife and I lived for 40 years in Cicero. She came down with brain cancer eight years ago and we decided to downsize and come to Westfield. Before coming to Westfield, I, it was my dream to always have a golf cart. And I checked and golf, and golf carts seemed to be, Westfield seemed to be very friendly towards golf carts. I even checked with my HOA before I moved into where I live to make sure they were allowed and they are. A couple corrections, people keep mentioning 25 miles an hour. I don't have my statistics, but I think probably at least 90, 95, 99% of golf carts, you're not allowed to go... you're not allowed to go, they're set to go less than 20 miles an hour. The other thing, am I allowed to ask questions of the board members? Does anybody have statistics based on the Midland Trace Trail? Since they've allowed golf carts, have there been any accidents at all?
Sir, we're not allowed to do Q and A, but yeah, sorry.
Before you make decisions, maybe we should be looking at that. Okay? If I was a young mother or father, my kids are grown, and I was an avid bike rider until I had disc surgery in my neck, and now I can't ride my bike. I rode during COVID, I rode probably six times a week, even in the winter. So I love bicycles. I would venture to say, if I was a young mother or father, taking my young baby, I would much rather have an oncoming golf cart than an oncoming bicycle. Also, if you guys want to set, I think I agree with the 15 miles an hour, but that should also be for bicycles as well. Most bike riders go more than 15 miles an hour. I can't, because I'm too slow. But, you know, I love my golf cart. I go out every evening. How am I doing on time? I'm basically done. But yeah, I just want statistics known on how many accidents there's been reported versus bicycles. Again, I think golf carts are safer than bikes, and I love riding my bike. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. We appreciate it. I believe, Tony. Tony?
My name's Tony Naslevich. I live in Springville Villas and Towns. And some of the stuff other people have gone over before, like the number of residents with golf carts. I mean, it seems like even if I wanted a golf cart, I got a two-car garage, it's full. I've got no place to keep a golf cart, which I suppose is true for most Westfield residents. So it's only benefiting those few who happen to live in the seven-figure homes. And this thing on the new ordinance about increased police coverage, I think that's an empty promise because we've already heard how overburdened all our public safety agencies are already. And another thing gotta consider is to like motorized bikes. I have an e-bike myself, too, but I have to pedal to use it. But I've seen a lot of them out there that are not pedaled, and those go up to like 40 miles an hour or so. In fact, they're legal down in Carmel, but I've been on the Monon Hill, seeing plenty of those down there. So what's gonna stop them under this ordinance? I mean, they're pretty much the same as a golf cart, only you have two wheels. So what's gonna stop them from being on the trails? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Rich Feldman, followed by Eric Freund.
Hi, I'm Rich Feldman, Reserve on South, off of 171st. Represent the HOA there, but have comments for myself as well. Back in January, when you had that forum, I wrote some stuff to John Dart. I've spoken to the mayor as well with a couple of meetings. But I wanted to kind of recap, you know, where I'm at and where our association is at as well. I gave input, as I said, to the District One meeting on infrastructure, education, and enforcement. I do believe until more structure, associated costs can be put in place with this whole ordinance, that we're probably well ahead of ourselves. It's just way too early to implement. I'm sure a lot of the notes were captured during those meetings, that I haven't seen a bunch of those notes, but from what I understand, majority were of the negative versus positive for the golf cart ordinance. The paths would not be safe, especially during busy times with people walking, people walking with carriages, people walking with carriages and dogs, bicycles, joggers, others. E-bikes are an issue, and there's a differentiation between the e-bikes and the pedal-assist e-bikes that another gentleman spoke to as far as speed. Additionally, if the ordinance passes and the number of golf carts increase significantly, additional congestion and safety issues would occur. Unfortunately, we've heard about, you know, never been an accident, historical nature, yet we speak about the growth of the community. You know, some of these things that were talked about is when we had a community of maybe 20,000. Now we're at 60, somebody said we're going to 90, whatever that number is. If you pass an ordinance and give basically a pass for people to go out and purchase golf carts, then the retrospective review of issues is worthless. You have to do a prospective issue, and also this community was not built like Peachtree or other areas that you guys have gone to, to view as far as a golf cart ordinance. And, you know, I spoke to John Dart, he's gone now, but I spoke to John about this at length. As far as the police, you know, I spoke to Officer Harris just about issues around things such as traffic, speeding, and what have you. You know, they can't keep up with that, partly due to the construction. So now you want to burden them with other activities. Probably not gonna happen. I say we should add it to the next election and put it as a question, and let the public, let the residents of Westfield vote, and not just rely on a few people.
Mr. President, it's been three minutes.
What's that?
It's been three minutes.
Has it? Okay, I'll be quiet then. Thank you.
Those darn attorneys, they get you every time.
I know, every time.
Eric Freund, followed by Melody Jones.
Can you hear me okay? My name is Eric Freund. Spelled like Freund, it's German spelling. I live at 18150 Kenzie Avenue. And just overall, mixing motorized vehicles with pedestrians and non-motorized vehicles in a constrained space is a bad idea from a safety perspective. Our trails have not been designed for motorized traffic of this magnitude. And just as an example, the bulk of our bicycle trails are 10-foot or less in width. A golf cart, just an average golf cart with mirrors, is over five feet wide. So how do you fit greater than 10 feet wide of golf carts, two-way traffic, on a trail that's less in width and has no sides to actually get over onto? So we don't have the infrastructure for this that creates an even greater safety hazard. As far as access and local access with these golf carts, increasing the zones that they can go on city streets is a great way to accomplish that goal without creating those safety hazards. Our trails are a great place for families to enjoy, for recreation, for exercise. I go there with my six- and seven-year-old all the time, and they get congested already. So a 1,200-pound electric golf cart coming down the path at my six-year-old with his training wheels is just, it's scary. And I think we need to think about the infrastructure that's set up in place, and if we really want to put that hazard in there and make that conscious decision. And that's really all I have to say. It's just, from a safety perspective and the infrastructure, what we have currently today is not designed for it. Thank you.
Melody Jones, followed by Kat Millard.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. It's nice to see you all again. As you know, I've been before you previously to talk about this. For those that are in the audience, excuse me, that don't know who I am, I was your former park director and was the leading person to get the trails started even before I was Parks Director here. The way most of our trails were funded was an 80/20 match, which came from transportation enhancement grants through NDOT. Those are federal grants and have federal laws that are attributed to those regulations, one of which is no motorized vehicles on the trails. The only type of motorized vehicle that is allowed is an adaptive device because of handicap being necessary. So no scooters, no electric bikes, and no golf carts. When this came about earlier this year, I reached out to one of my previous bosses, Dale Brier, who is the Director of Recreation and Outdoors for DNR. And for those of us that think that this is just a Westfield thing, it's not. It's getting statewide attention. I was informed earlier today that NDOT, the gentleman's name is Brandon, I'm gonna burcho his last name, Burgrow, with NDOT is now has a legal team looking into this. The repercussions, we have no idea if they're gonna go anywhere with it, but the chances are that any federally-funded project for trails in the future would be in jeopardy. Dale also told me they may be looking at reimbursement for money that was given to us previously under false pretenses. So I'm just warning you right now, gentlemen, this may get a little more sticky than just hundred-and-some Westfield residents coming and opposing it. I am not opposed to golf carts in our community. I think they will be a wonderful addition, but in the right place. Not on our trail system, and as previous people have talked about, the Parks Department oversees our trails, our named trails. They are considered linear parks, so they fall under their preview. So the other, you know, the eight-foot wide pass around everybody's subdivision on the streets in Westfield, I have no problem with. That's fine. We just have to regulate it, put a proper map out, and be able to handle that. I applaud you for changing the fact that anybody that's driving it now has to be a licensed driver. I was really upset when I saw the first one, thinking, "These kiddos have never even taken driver's ed, and we're now putting them behind a wheel on a golf cart with, you know, 13 of their friends." So I'm really glad that that was made a change, but I want to just say, please, 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 reconsider.
Council President, it's been three minutes.
They shouldn't be on the Midland. They should have never been put on the Midland to begin with. That's all.
Thank you, Melody.
Kat Millard, followed by Vinnie Pandy.
Hello, it's Kat Millard. I live 3347 Heathcliff Court, Cotswold. I did not move here for the golf carts. I moved here because it's quiet and it's safe. And I'm unlike my neighbor, I love him, I have never dreamt about owning a golf cart, and I never will. And if there are only 5% to 7% of people in Westfield that own golf carts, why do they even get a vote? I'm just curious about that. I know it's not a Q and A session. I'm generally an optimistic person, but I do believe unfortunately that the golf carts are gonna win this. Unfortunately, I hate them on the trails. We had an elderly woman who almost got killed by one. And the thing is, too, that it's, somebody will get killed, and it's going to be on each of you and people who voted for it, right? And it's not when, it's not if that happens, it's when that happens. And I'm not sure if it's gonna be somebody who gets hit by a golf cart, or if it's gonna be maybe the baby of the guy I saw driving one-handed, holding an infant, crossing 32 from the dollar store over to the Kroger parking lot. I know people keep saying law enforcement is overworked or et cetera. So what is the plan for that? Because there has to be a plan, right? And other rules. She mentioned, yeah, you have to have a driver's license. I'm sorry, not every, there are fetuses out there driving these golf carts. I know that for a fact. My, also, my favorite thing is those young, young kids, elementary school, driving the golf cart, texting on their phone. So what kind of rules do you have planned for that stuff? That's not only dangerous for them, that's dangerous for me because I was walking that day and they were not paying attention, right? And I can jump out of the way, I'm still young enough to do that. Elderly people, somebody with a baby carriage, little kids running out, they do run out and they dart quickly. Let me see if I have anything else. Not just the rhetorical question, what are you, you guys willing to take responsibility when that someone is killed? It's a very, very serious question. Thank you.
Thank you, Kat.
Vinnie Pandy, and Ryan Morris will be next.
Hi, I'm Vinnie Pandy, 1228 Viking Topaz Court. I'm not really supposed to be here. We were going to move anywhere in the country, and we were on the way to Tennessee about four years ago. And every time we drove by, we'd stop here, and we'd spend some time, and we loved the place. So we chose to actually come here and live here. And a lot of that was with the outdoors. I'm an avid bike rider, bike rider, as you can see from my physique, I ride pretty well and pretty fast, and I try to stay on the trails. And I'm so thankful I can be on the trails because I know that I'm hitting that 15 mile per hour limit, sometimes I go over, sometimes I go under, and I'm always very careful about the people that I see. I'm slamming on the brakes all the time to avoid people. And I'm thankful to the people on the trail to allow me to be there. With the golf carts coming in, I don't know. I don't know. They're much faster than I am, they're much bigger than I am, and they weigh a little bit more than I do. So my hope is that we think about golf carts as being motorized vehicles and allow them to be on the roads like we allow the bikes to be on the roads. And I've seen bikers on the roads slowing things down, and people are very gracious about them, let them go through, but the trails are a nice place to be, so I want to leave them for the pedestrians and the bikers. And I'll be careful on the bikes because I don't want my friends in blue to look me up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Morris.
Hi, my name's Ryan Morris. Live at 15566 Monon Hills Court. Mayor Willis, council members, neighbors, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and actually prepared a speech here. I'm in support of expanding reasonable golf cart access to Westfield. My wife and I moved to Westfield in 2018, and I owned a golf cart for six years, just sold it recently because we moved to the west side of 31 where golf carts are not allowed and will continue to be not allowed. But I'm still in support of that because I believe reasonable golf cart access in Westfield, and I want to address the concerns head-on, especially around safety. So let's start around with the facts. Over the last eight years, and this is all public information, the Westfield Police Department has received only 11 complaints related to golf carts, 11, on the Midland Trace Trail. That's one in 2017, one in 2018, seven in 2019, and two more recently. But across all of that, not a single one has been documented with an accident or injury. So while safety concerns do deserve some respect here, obviously, the data doesn't reflect that this is a crisis. It reflects a need for structure, and that's exactly what this ordinance does. It sets real standards, a minimum age, driver's license, insurance, required lights, turn signals, speed limits, and clearly-defined enforcement plan with escalating penalties. That is how you regulate safe behavior, not by banning it, but by guiding it. Across the country, and right here in Indiana, we've heard people mention it tonight, our neighboring cities are already doing this as well. They're already proving that golf carts are being used with the right oversight. They become a practical mobility option, not a liability. This ordinance brings Westfield in line with these, those best practices and makes access more consistent across our neighborhoods. And let's talk about why this matters quickly. Golf carts are used by parents heading to games, older adults going to the grocery store, neighbors visiting each other without getting in a full-size car. They reduce traffic, lower emissions, create a stronger sense of community. Restricting them forces more people into cars, increases congestion, as we've seen already with the incredible growth of Westfield, and makes our streets less safe. This ordinance is not about turning trails into highways. It's about thoughtfully expanding access while holding people accountable. It's about equity, consistency, and modernizing how we move through our city. So let's not react with fear, let's lead with facts, fairness, and forward-thinking policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last card I have at the moment, Rachel Blightcher? I'm sorry.
Hello, my name's Rachel Bliker. I'm a voter at 16244 Milhousen Trail in Westfield, Indiana. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but for the few people who know me in the room, I'm not terribly introverted. So a couple of things I wanted to comment on. For every person that did move here for golf carts, there's probably three to five people who didn't. I moved here from downtown Chicago. I moved here for the trails, not for the golf carts. I'm a runner, marathon runner. I loved having the access to run as long as I needed to. I've run all the way to downtown Carmel and back, so I love having that access. Additionally, I am a mom of two small children, and for anyone that doesn't know this, I would much rather face a bicycle than a nine, like a 900-pound golf cart with my two toddlers. So just wanted to clear that fact up as well. Like someone else mentioned, you know, 90% of households in Westfield don't own golf carts. And I'm a big believer in doing what's best for the greater good of our community, even if I wanted a golf cart. if I wanted a golf cart, like if it wasn't good for my community, I'm okay giving up that benefit. I think it's truly like a first-world problem if I have to drive my car instead of my golf cart to the grocery store. Like, how lucky are we that that's the biggest problem that we're dealing with? I also think this is a poor use of time, money, and resources, utilizing our police departments, our parks departments, to monitor trails that sound like they aren't monitored already. I understand the left gentleman's concerns around safety facts, but as I understand, it's very hard to like read a license plate on a golf cart. So if I got knocked over by a golf cart and they're two miles ahead of me, how am I going to report it? I don't know who was in it, I don't have any recognizing features. The last thing is, I follow you guys all, I'm very interested in what's happening in Westfield, I'm very invested in Westfield, and I'm just concerned about why this is a priority right now, when there's so many other things with our infrastructure, our economy, our growth, that we could really be focused on. It doesn't seem like everything hasn't been acknowledged that needs to be for this plan, and I don't necessarily see why this decision needs to be made today, instead of in a year or two years from now, when we can continue to take in the information that all of your constituents in Westfield have brought up, and acknowledge those, and work through those, and find a solution that's going to work for more people in Westfield. So, yeah, I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel.
I've received two more cards.
Great.
Michael Ferrando, followed by Tanya Hyatt.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, first responders, police, fire. I appreciate you for your service in keeping our community safe. My name is Michael Ferrato, I'm at 16540 Vintage Court North in Brookside neighborhood. My family and I moved here eight years ago from the east coast. I'm a New York native, my wife is too, and so are my kids. We love the east coast, our whole family's back there. We took a job transfer eight years ago for what we thought was only going to be two years, then we were going to move back. Eight years later, we're still here, and it's because of all these neighbors and this community that we live in. The golf carts were surprising to us. We didn't expect them, we didn't grow up with them, we didn't see them, but we loved them. Not initially, I was kind of figuring things out, but we really fell in love with them because of the community aspect that it created and that we saw. One of the first things that really is a memory in my mind is when we were, my 13, now 13-year-old twins, were going to Cary Ridge for kindergarten, and we were pulling into the parking lot, there was probably more golf carts than there were cars. And that was one of the things where it's like, where are we? We're in some place that's a lot different than anywhere else that we've been. And all of our family that has come visit us from all over the country have said the same thing. Where is this Westfield, Indiana? Where is this Indianapolis that we've never heard of? And it's because of the community, it's because of the neighbors, and it's because of some of the progressive ways that we're trying to evolve this community forward. And golf carts are one of those things, like I said. And right now, I got a 360 alert because my family, my wife and my kids, I'm not with them, are riding a golf cart. It's something we do as a family every night. We go, we play pickleball, we go out to dinner, we go out grab ice cream, we do these things together. I hear a lot of the different concerns from some of my neighbors about, you know, a lot of it's safety. And I think with responsibility and due diligence, we can address it with, we can address the safety issues while making sure that, we make sure that all neighbors still have access to the things that they want to enjoy and the things that they want to do. You know, one of the, I was trying to think through like, you know, sharing the trail system, right, with golf carts, and we have bikes and pedestrians. I mean, all the time, I'm on, I'm driving my car down the street, and there's bike, bikers, right? There's no lanes for the bikers, but I'm responsible, I try to be safe, right? And I move over, and I'm responsible speed limit to pass that biker, so that that biker can still enjoy that street. And, you know, I hear a lot of examples about, you know, kids that are underage, right, and, you know, driving at high speeds, right, or holding their baby. Well, I don't, that father shouldn't be holding his baby in a car, let alone a golf cart. I mean, there's a difference between safety and stupidity. And so-
Council President, it's been three minutes.
Really want to make sure that we think about this from a safety perspective, we also think about it from a responsibility perspective. And I think if we do that, I think our community as a whole will be able to enjoy both golf carts and the trail system safely together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tanya Hyatt, followed by Pete Shaw, which is my new current last card.
All right. Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak this evening. I know I kind of last-minute threw my card in here. For the record, my name is Tanya Hyatt. I live at 16131 Chancery's Widge Ray in the city of Westfield. I am an avid trail user. I'm a runner, marathon trainer, I'm a cyclist, I'm a dog walker, I'm a mother who brings her kids on the trails. I'm also a golf cart user. I use the Midland Trail to navigate from Brookside to downtown Westfield. That's my kids' favorite time, is when we take them on the golf cart, especially after school. If they've had a rough day, it is a way for them to decompress, get some fresh air. We don't speed fast, we, you know, go slow when we come across a pedestrian. I have never encountered a golf cart that ran me off. I feel like once you get used to it, once you have a community set, you learn how to be responsible and coexist together. We use the golf cart to support the businesses downtown during the construction. I feel like that has been one of the things that we're most proud of doing, because we didn't have any other way to get downtown to support the businesses. Because the construction, we wouldn't go otherwise, or the lack of parking. We also utilize our golf cart to pick our children up from school. We are Cary Ridge, the golf cart school community, and I will say, it has made pickup and drop-off a heck of a lot safer for us. I don't know how many times I've tried to leave Cary Ridge parking lot and almost gotten T-boned from somebody speeding out of 161st roundabout. I felt like it's safer to use the trail system off of Cary Road there to go back to my neighborhood as opposed to pulling my own car out of the parking lot. Let me see, what else do I have here? I just want, you know, nothing more than to maybe expand this ordinance for others in the community so that they can also enjoy the golf cart with their families. And again, we have, for the record, we have never encountered any safety issue. Thank you.
Pete Shaw.
My name is Pete Shaw, 2622 Diamond Te Drive, Westfield. And I'd like to tell you what happened yesterday. My wife and I were biking on the Midland Trail, and we were going east down the wooded curvy part. And we got to the bottom of the curvy part, and there, I saw a golf cart that had stopped, and the driver, a woman, had out her phone, and, you know, could have been some emergency, I don't know, but she was talking on her phone, did not pull over. So my wife was behind me, you know, we put on the brakes as quick as we could, but in the, going westward was another biker on kind of a racing-type bike that whizzed right by us, and so like the worst-case scenario was about to happen. All three things, you know, we were on electric bikes, and there was a golf cart, and there was a regular bike. We all came together at the same moment. Nobody got hurt. Thank goodness. It was a close call, though, and I didn't report it. So I would say we are not in favor of having golf carts on the trails. I think on the streets with, you know, licensed drivers and license plates, that it could, you know, the laws of the, of driving on the road could be enforced where they could not be on the trail. And I think that, you know, there are so many, I tell you, that one time I described yesterday has happened, probably something similar, probably has happened six times in seven years, maybe, none of which were reported. I didn't get hurt, my wife didn't get hurt, but it's there. It's a safety concern, and it's a safety issue, and it's, you know, something, God forbid, terrible is waiting to happen. So my concern is safety on the trails, and I thank you for your time.
Any other cards to see? Sir, come on forward. Thank you.
My name's Doug Plummer. I live in downtown Westfield, and I've been listening to all the comments, I've made a few notes, and I'd like to respond to some of them. I was going to take them in order, but the last guy used the verb whizzing, which to me is a hazard on the trail. These Lance Armstrong wannabes whizzing down the trails as fast as they can with their tight pants on and their tight shirts and their aerodynamic helmets on. They're the danger. Now, perhaps the woman who wanted to use the phone should have pulled over, but kudos to her for stopping, right? Rather than the continuing to drive the golf cart while at the same time talking on the phone. So I guess that, in my mind, kind of sums up that I think most of the golf cart drivers are careful and are looking out for people. So I have a golf cart, it's not fancy. So I probably walk, for every 50 miles I walk on the trails, I probably drive my golf cart one mile. So I see it from both perspectives. The sound that sends chills down my spine is the growl of an e-bike approaching me, because I don't know what they're going to do, I don't know whether they're out of elementary school yet or not, they pose a hazard. So it's kind of off-topic here, but I think something needs to be done about that at some point. So no accidents on golf carts, according to the mayor. But in the current, I think it was the current a couple of weeks ago, there was a picture of a bloody arm where this pedestrian on the trail got hit by a biker who then committed hit-and-run, took off, right? So lack of judgment on the part of that bicyclist. E-bikes are concerned. I did move here because of golf carts. I recognize everybody didn't, but I did. One guy had a good point about modifying golf carts. I'm sure the intent was, we don't want you to modify them so they go faster, but if someone has a golf cart that doesn't have all the street requirements, headlights, blinkers, and et cetera, I think that person should be able to buy that stuff online and install it on their own golf cart. So you might want to put some definition to "modified" in the ordinance. The e-bikes, again, you know, no age limit on that. Sharp turns, if I took a sharp turn in my golf cart, it's going to tip over. Golf carts aren't capable of making sharp turns, particularly the way some of these bicyclists do. Speaking of bicyclists, going down a narrow street like E Street on a bicycle doesn't make sense to me. It's not enough, that street's not wide enough for someone to pull out and go around the bicyclist without encountering a car coming in your opposite direction.
Council President, it's been three minutes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening? Come on forward. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Wardlow. I live at 4651 Everest Drive, and I will let you know that I called the mayor's office on Friday with a question about golf carts, and Mayor Willis called me Saturday morning. So that was, I really appreciated that. It was very surprising, so thank you for that. But I read through the ordinance again on Saturday, and the one thing, there's a lot of things that concern me, but this is a new one. It says the speed limit is 25 miles an hour on roadways and perimeter paths, if I read it correctly, and then 15 on named trails. Well, to me, a perimeter path is a trail or a sidewalk, and in my neighborhood, everybody walks our perimeter path because you can make a complete turn through our whole neighborhood using that perimeter path. So it's just used as well as a trail is. You know, walkers, walkers with dogs, kids in strollers, wagons, kids learning to ride their bikes with training wheels, because you know you're not going to get hit on a perimeter trail. So that would be my main concern, if we can drop it down to 15 on the perimeter trails. I'm not for golf carts on anything, but that would be a good compromise. So, thank you for your time.
Lori, there we go. Anyone else this evening? Feel like I'm Phil Donahue. For those of you not old enough to know what I'm talking about, I apologize. My mother made me watch it, she loved it. See, no one else, we're going to close public comment this evening. Our next order of business, we're going to actually move to our next meeting, which will be the appointment, the council appointment to the Fire Merit Board. So we'll move to the comprehensive plan update from Rundle Ernstberger and Associates. I believe we have a presentation this evening to give a brief update.
Thank you, President. Cynthia Bowen is here representing Rundle Ernstberger Associates. She'll be giving an update, and then maybe about midway through the presentation, one of the subconsultants, Urban Three, they're doing the economic impact analysis, they will jump on virtually to give a presentation, and then I'll go back to Cynthia for the last part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Council Mayor, thank you for allowing me to be here this evening and give you an update on where we stand.
Yeah, Cynthia, we'll just wait a second just so we can better hear.
Of course.
And also, I think everyone needs some water and some better air conditioning, but we'll That's a budget consideration.
Mayor, Mayor, can you put in your budget for new air conditioning for this facility, please?
We are being fiscally responsible. Unfortunately, we're all going to pay the price tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we're going to try to be as brief as we can, because we know you have other things on the agenda, but we have a lot of updates to provide to you tonight. Want to talk about where we are in the process, some of the activities to date. I want to briefly touch on the vision, values, and goals. As Caleb said, Urban Three is going to present some preliminary analysis from their work, and then I'll do a brief overview of the place types. I know several of you have seen those, and then we'll talk about where we're going on our next steps. So in terms of our process, since the last time we've been here before, we have moved four stages into the draft of the plan. So we have gone quite a ways way into the process. We have finished with capacity building and vision and values. So how we've gotten there are through many activities. We have been to several farmers' markets throughout both the winter and here in the summer. I will tell you, we have had a better, more captive audience in the winter because they were contained in a room versus me chasing people around the farmer's market, asking them to give us input on the plan. But some of the key things that I think you all have heard too, you know, people want to see more unique dining experiences, preservation of trees, as well as more diverse housing options here in Westfield. We've had several steering committee meetings. Those initial meetings focused on identifying the streaks, strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities in Westfield. And then we started to work through our, setting a vision for the community and our draft value statements. We have had two elected officials and appointed officials meetings. We focused on data insights, and then, this map may look a little familiar to you, we started working on the draft place types, what those are and where they may be located within the city. We then, in April, had our Community Planning Week, which was an entire week where we really delved into crafting that vision statement, crafting those value statements and some goals, as well as really drilling down into the place types. We had two public meetings. The first- The first one was an open house on April 14th, had a good turnout with that. The second one was on April 17th and had a good turnout as well. I think that was also, you guys had a council meeting that evening. We then also had moved all the materials online for an entire month. So people were also able to participate online. We then continued with a few more steering committees, meetings, discussed the goals for the quality of place, transportation, housing, and economic development, and really started to drill down into those. Our steering committee gave us feedback on those. And we, as you can see, we started to evolve the place types map even further. We then took this, this information out to the joint focus group meetings. And so what those are are subject matter experts from both local and regional groups who then give us feedback on what we're looking at, how we're tailoring it towards Westfield, and some of their input. And you can see some of the results there on that slide. As I said, we also have other engagements. So we're trying to reach as many people as possible, trying to get a cross-section of the community and making sure we're giving a wide demographic. So we've attended two pastries with a planner. We, like I said, we had that open, online open house. We had 200 responses to that open house. We did a meeting in a box where individuals and organizations could come in and check out those exercises and complete them with their organization, their neighborhood, and whatnot. We even spoke to high school students over the course of a day because those are the folks we're also planning for in the future. And then we've conducted several staff workshops to continue to refine what we're doing. So going over the vision, value, and goals. So I'm not going to read the vision statement for you here, but you know, what we're looking at is where Westfield is going to be in 20 years. That we want to continue to be welcoming, connected, resilient, that we want to make sure we have purposeful and thoughtful growth, dynamic public spaces, and a strong economy that supports residents of all ages. And we want to make sure we're using strategic planning investment to ensure Westfield remains a leader in livability. Next, we developed value statements, which took that vision and broke it down further, saying, you know, Westfield is a place where we want to be thoughtful, have thoughtful planning and intentional growth, making sure we're ensuring safety, quality of education, access to healthcare, and support for every stage of life, that we want to promote attainable housing. We want to ensure trails, sidewalks, and transit connect people daily, that we want to have local, national, and global businesses fuel a strong and diverse economy. And that recreation, entertainment amenities, and programming are integral to our city here. So from there, we had four different goal categories. Of course, transportation. So the next four slides will be on those goal categories. And we, they take those, the vision and value statements, and then break them down even further into these goal statements of what we want to achieve. So there are five transportation goals that focus on modernization, connectivity, and safety. We have six goals under housing that focus on creating villages around our small unincorporated areas like Eagle Town, Julietville, Hortonville, updating the UDO and supporting mixed-use residential and trail-oriented development. Under economic development, we have six goals and focusing on things like continuing to incentivize and target specific economic sectors, supporting destination development, marketing downtown and Grand Park as regional destinations of this city. And then finally, quality of place. We have five goals here. And they include things like celebrating local history through art and placemaking initiatives, develop industries that integrate agriculture into our business and development, preserving tree grove stands. And those are just some of the few of the things that we have targeted under here. Next, what I want to do is turn it over to Adam Carr from Urban Three, who's going to talk about some of their findings when it comes to some of their fiscal analysis. Adam?
Great. Thank you, Cynthia. Can y'all hear me all right?
They're all shaking their heads yes.
Okay, great. So yeah, like Cynthia mentioned, my name's Adam Carr. I'm a senior analyst at Urban Three. And today we'll be walking through some of the preliminary findings of our work that we've been doing regarding fiscal productivity analysis for Westfield. And I want to just start off giving a little bit of context around how we think about our work and how we think about development in cities. If you go to the next slide. So we kind of like to start out thinking about, well, what is a city? You know, a city is comprised of its people, businesses, residences, and, you know, a variety of things that make an individual place unique. And one of the things that we also like to think is, you know, extremely important to a city is the land. So if you go to the next slide. And that land is something that, you know, there's a finite amount of. Of course, cities can annex, but you know, your current city boundary is an area that you have that y'all as stewards on the council and all people in Westfield need to think carefully about how you use that land and how do you want to develop moving forward? If you go to the next slide. One of the things that we also like to talk about when it comes to development in a city is kind of using an analogy of how a farmer might think about their land. And a farmer needs to think about, you know, the various inputs and outputs from their, from their land and how they can ensure that they can use that land productively, not just for today, but for the future. Farmers will talk about things like water consumption per acre, labor cost per acre, crop yield per acre. And using that, that concept of productivity and efficiency is, is an important thing that we at Urban Three like to think about when we're doing our analysis for a community. So if you go to the next slide. What we're going to get into in our, in our portion of the presentation isn't scary math. I just want to disarm you. We're not going to be doing complex calculations or anything like that. What we're, what we're going to talk about with this, these ideas of productivity and efficiency are something that we think about in another part of our lives that we're pretty familiar with. If you go to the next slide. When, when we think about how we compare cars, we don't talk about cars in terms of miles per tank and how, how far a car can go on an individual tank, right? If you go to the next slide, we all know that cars have different sized tanks, right? And so, you know, it's not really fair to compare them and how far they can go per tank. Instead, if you go to the next slide, we talk about it in terms of miles per gallon, right? And this, this concept of efficiency and kind of putting, making an apples-to-apples comparison of how efficient a car can use this kind of finite resource, right? If you go to the next slide, it's just reordering, reordering how we think about these, these vehicles and how efficiently they use a gallon of gasoline. So that's just to kind of frame our analysis and what we're going to get into. If you go forward, we can look at kind of how we break things down in Westfield. Next slide. So here, what we're looking at are all of the parcels inside of Hamilton County. And you'll see Washington Township is outlined by that black dotted line. In Westfield, you'll see the label that's kind of right over the middle of downtown. And so what we see here is, on the left, you'll notice the kind of color scale when looking at the total value of properties. So purples and reds are kind of the most valuable properties, is the highest value. And then as you kind of go down, yellows and greens are kind of lower value. You'll notice that a lot of the, the large parcels stick out in kind of those purples and reds. Again, this is kind of that miles per tank perspective. And so when we flip this, if you go to the next slide, to the miles per gallon or kind of value per acre consideration, you can kind of see that the, the map changes. And we don't want to stop here. We'd like to take things into 3D. So if you go to the next slide, we can really see how varied this value per acre metric can be across Hamilton County. And let's, let's zoom in to Washington Township. If you go to the next slide, we can kind of look at some of the, the different developments in areas of the township and then within Westfield as well. So, so here we're kind of getting a perspective of how different areas of the community perform from this value per acre perspective. If you go to the next slide, what we also wanted to do is kind of zoom in to a couple of areas of interest in the county and in Westfield. So if you go to the next slide, we, we zoom in on the Midland Trace Trail Corridor. So this is a quarter-mile buffer on either side of the trail, highlighting some different properties that fall within that, that quarter mile, pointing out some of, some of the, the higher performing properties in terms of that value per acre metric. So we see some areas around Noblesville. And then also, if you go for one more slide, we can zoom in to some of the properties in Washington Township and Westfield. And so some of the, the higher performing properties in Westfield do fall within this quarter-mile buffer with one of the peak properties being some townhomes that were being developed, like the example of 208 Midland Trace Loop at 14 million per acre. One thing I did want to mention is that this data is from 2024. So some of the newer developments might not show up right now. But we would expect, you know, newer, newer developments may have varied performance just depending on some of the development characteristics of the sites. Just one thing I wanted to note. If you go to the next slide, we also took a little zoom in. Similarly, looking at the Monon Trail, looking at another quarter-mile buffer, it, it passes through Carmel. So some of that, you'll see some of the, the areas around the trail in Carmel sticking out. If we zoom and go forward one slide, we'll zoom in again to the Washington Township and Westfield area, again, calling out some of the, the higher performing properties along this portion of the trail. And we just wanted to do, if you go forward one more slide, do a comparison of these two trail corridors across the county. So there's some interesting takeaways, of course, because the Monon Trail goes through Carmel, it has kind of this higher average value per acre. But we did want to focus on how these two trail corridors perform in Washington Township. So if you go for one, one more slide, and I think focus on this a little bit more. So you can see in this case, similar acreage across, across the township for, for these two corridors, fairly similar value yielding similar average value per acre across the two. One of the things that we wanted to call out, though, is that there's significant amount of vacant properties along these corridors. So there's some interesting opportunities, kind of to one of the things that Cynthia was talking about, looking at opportunities for doing kind of mixed-use trail, trail-oriented development to continue bringing that, that productivity and activity to these corridors. So, yeah, if you go forward one more slide. Next, we just wanted to kind of highlight an interesting, interesting feature of how Indiana does property tax. If you go forward one more slide. This is looking at the total gross value of total gross assessed value of all properties in, in Westfield. And this is that value per acre perspective. If you go forward one more, what we wanted to just highlight is how it changes when we look at the debt assessed value. And if you go forward one more, there's a side-by-side. So you can see that between the gross assessed value and net assessed value, there's a reduction in about $3 billion worth of property value across the city of Westfield. And if we just zoom in, just as an example, if you go forward one more slide, we can just kind of see how that plays out for a sample property. So in this case, this is a parcel that has a gross assessed value of around $650,000 per, for the property. And if you go forward one more, we can kind of see what's coming into play to get from that gross assessed value to the net assessed value. So various deductions that lead to this net assessed value of just under 400,000 per acre. So just, you know, an interesting thing to note when thinking about future development and how the kind of property tax system plays out in Westfield. If you go forward one more, we can get into this concept of productivity ratios. And this may, when we start to get into it, it may seem like a somewhat convoluted concept. But really, what we're looking at here is just the kind of physical footprint taking up, taken up by an area and comparing that to the financial footprint that that area makes up. So if you go forward one more, what we'll look at here is the city of Westfield's footprint within the Hamilton County and compare that to its financial footprint. So city of Westfield takes up about 7% of taxable acreage in Hamilton County and generates about 17% of the property value across the county. So comparing those, that's a 1 to 2.4 ratio. And another way to think about this is that, that an average parcel in the city of Westfield is about 2.4 times as productive as the average parcel in Hamilton County. So just an interesting metric to keep in mind. If you go for one more, what we look at here is how the downtown Westfield performs against the city. So doing similar, similar comparison, Westfield's downtown takes up about 0.8% of the taxable acres in the city and generates about 1% of the, the value. So that's about a 1 to 1.2 ratio. And we wanted to do a comparison of Westfield to another community in Hamilton County. So if you go forward one, one slide, we just compared to your neighbor to the south of Carmel. So this is their city. If you go forward one more, we'll look at their downtown compared to their city. And so this is about 1% of their community is taken up by the downtown with about 3% of the value being generated by their downtown. Or a 1 to 3.2 ratio. And if you go forward one more, we just do a little side-by-side. And you can, sorry, forward one more of these two, just so you can have some, some of those comparisons. And generally at Urban Three, we have found that, you know, communities that have a pretty robust downtown are achieving about a 1 to 6 ratio. So there's, there's lots of opportunity for, for growth, I'd say, in Westfield's downtown. But we'll, you know, when we kind of do an additional follow-up presentation later on, we can get into that more at that time, too. Okay, if you go forward one more. Now we just wanted to give a quick overview of kind of breaking down some different land use types, different development patterns in Westfield and, and Washington Township. And these are, I just want to make sure that you're keeping in mind, these are averages across these kind of broad land use types. We'll get into more detail at a later date of specific examples, but these are looking at kind of the, the averages across these different development patterns. So yeah, if we forward one more, we can look at the residential types that we kind of broken out. So here's kind of the three categories that we looked at, single-family, missing middle, and multifamily. And you can see kind of the, the variation across these three development patterns, these different land uses in Washington Township. So single-family at 1.6 million per acre on average. Missing middle, this includes townhomes at 2.1 million per acre. And multifamily at 1.3. An interesting note there, multifamily, we've kind of found in our analysis tends to have kind of older year built, which might be playing into this, this kind of it being on the lower end of this average, but just a note there. If you go next, we can look at some commercial land use types. And so here's a range from kind of small, small-scale commercial through big box, commercial centers, eateries, and Main Street. So you can see this range that generally, as you're getting to kind of more compact uses, looking at kind of more of the site being taken up by buildings, we see this kind of increase in the average value per acre with, yeah, 2.7 million being, you know, about five times the average Walmart in Washington Township, or about five times a big box store. If you go to the next slide, we also wanted to look at industrial. Again, this is just an average of all industrial properties that are currently existing in Washington Township. in Washington Township. Industrial averaged about 0.4 million per acre. And so that's kind of where it falls on the spectrum. If you go one more. This is just kind of a bigger roll up of some of the different land uses we were talking about, harkening back to the the classic Brady Bunch three by three grid. If you go forward one more, this is just rolling up those different residential, commercial, and mixed use types that we see in Westfield and pulling some from other other communities in Hamilton County. One thing I wanted to mention is that when we're talking about mixed use here, we're focusing on kind of vertical mixed use. So having the potential to have something like a commercial or retail on the ground floor, and then maybe office or residential on the upper floors. But you can kind of see, as you increase density of these different uses, we generally see an increase in the value per acre across these property types. And if you go forward one more, we just put it on a on a bar chart, so you can kind of track that maybe a little bit more easily. So, yeah, here's kind of general findings in terms of these broad land use categories at different densities across Westfield and Hamilton County. If you go forward one more, we're getting close to the end here, but this is just highlighting some of those different land uses that we might have seen in some of those more specific photo examples with that 3D model. If you go forward one more, just calling out some different developments from around Westfield with the value per acre of those different developments. And, yeah, a couple, a couple very productive developments kind of near the downtown at 10 million per acre. And again, with the peak development or peak productivity at 208 Midland Trace Loop, some townhomes there at 14 million per acre. And then the last section here is just, again, kind of getting to these kind of averages across the different land use categories that we we saw in Washington Township. You go forward one more, just breaking it out. So looking at Washington Township's total footprint, if you go forward, about 44% is that is taken up by agriculture. If you go forward one more, 35% is in single family. Go forward again. About 7% is in commercial land uses. Go forward one more. Industrial at 1.5%. Multifamily at 1.1%. Missing middle at 0.6%. And then kind of everything else, whether that be municipal parks or other other kind of land use categories at 11%. And forward one more is just kind of putting that all together. And then the last thing we wanted to show was just kind of the average across these different land uses in totality. One thing I wanted to call out is that you'll notice here the single family value per acre average is lower compared to what we had just seen a few slides ago in the residential section. The reason for this is, in this roll up of the single family land uses, this includes properties that are identified as residential vacant. So we can kind of see the impact that undeveloped land has on looking on that average value per acre. So just wanted to note that, if you're going back and looking at and comparing the two, this one includes undeveloped single family properties. And that's all I had for you today. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, a few more slides to go through in our place types. And again, as we had talked about before, we are going beyond a traditional land use map, where the traditional land use map focuses solely on the placement of land uses and what can and can't be placed in the community. So instead, we're going with place types that, when fully built out, will provide high level guidance for where, what the mix of uses could be, defining the character, the scale, the form, and the function of these places. So we're looking at highlighting what those unique attributes would be for each of those places. So right now, we have identified 20 different place types for the city. And now I should say that, as we're still going through this process, it may be that some of these may get merged together or others may evolve. So we have six different economic oriented place types, which include flex industrial, general industrial, and an innovation district. We have Grand Park Sports Campus, Grand Park District, and Destination Development. All of these will be economic oriented place types. In terms of residential, our our next one is mixed use and community oriented place types. So they are, they focus on the other side of the commercial perspective. So we have suburban commercial. We have the downtown as its own place type, bordered by what the study is that Browning Day is doing right now. And then the Village Center, which are going to be smaller nodes throughout the community. In terms of residential place types, we have quite a few of them. We have rural residential. We have agri hood, which would be a new place type, looking around more rural areas with a center village node around residential. We have traditional suburban neighborhood. We have suburban village neighborhood. We have urban village neighborhood, and then master planned residential, which are going to be those types of things like Chatham and other developments like that. Next, we have resident, we have neighborhood transition area. So those are going to be those neighborhoods that might be in transition to other uses like mixed use or a or from residential to commercial. And then also multi unit. So areas that would be designated for multifamily housing types, which could include townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, quadplex, that missing middle that we've talked about. Then we have three other place types. So we have natural areas and open spaces. We have community institutional. And what I want to say about that is, really, community institutional should be allowed in any of the place types. So this is one that we're looking at, that we may just be merging into each of the place types, because, you know, this would include churches, fire station, other government facilities, schools, all those types of things. So, you know, we want to make sure that they're allowed where they need to be. And then the last one is trail oriented development. And this would be more of an overlay, that we have specific nodes at key intersections where there's a trail that overlaps an area that's undeveloped, that we could make that a unique place with higher intensity development, with mixed uses. And it could really become its own place where development is interacting with the trail instead of it just being adjacent, trail adjacent. So our next steps. So we have an elected and appointed officials joint workshop on August 18th at 7:00 PM at the City Services Building. We have our next public workshop on September 9th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Westfield Washington Township Public Library. We will continue to refine the place types map and add more detail to the place types themselves. We will continue to flesh out the policy to support the place type framework and then have Urban Three do a return on analysis of the details of those place types. So now that we have a baseline, we know then how the place types will then affect that baseline. And so with that, that concludes our update.
Thank you, Cynthia. Any questions this evening? I did ask Kevin during the meeting about getting some of the tax data part of the presentation, because I noticed, just trying to see, that some of our neighborhoods are actually pretty high value in terms of some of the property tax value piece as well. So just trying to compare that, because even in Carmel Village, West Clay actually has an unbelievable AV. And then we're seeing, I I think, some of our particular neighborhoods also have some, I mean, residential, obviously, the focus is more commercial. But we have some residential areas that are pretty significant in AV as well.
Yes, I can, we can work on that, and we'll get with Kevin and get that to you.
Great. Thank you very much. So we're going to move on to, do we have anything else this evening? Here, we will move to old business, which is ordinance 2530, 2025, which is the golf cart ordinance. This evening, we've asked for a couple of presentations and so forth. But specifically, we will have the mayor open up some comments. Councilor Woniger is here also, that we've asked to kind of do a thorough explanation of what's actually in the ordinance. And we're also here from our police chief Keen as well. So Mayor, would you like to like to start?
Yes, sure. Thank you. Appreciate it. And I apologize for the temperature in here. It is, it is hot. No other way to say it. I thought before council went into a lot of details on the Xs and Os of this plan, we needed to set the stage of how we got to this point. I think there's a lot of assumptions out there, some accurate, some not so much. But I thought was, it was prudent for us to reset that, to set the stage on why we're even doing this in the first place. So to give you a little history, back in 2018, the city, a previous mayor several councils ago, approved an ordinance to expand golf cart usage in the city of Westfield. This was originally supposed to be a temporary ordinance or a trial ordinance of three years. And to see what golf cart interaction with pedestrians on our trails would mean, whether it was safe moving forward, was it worthy of expanding, or should the city pull back? And the area that was carved out for this was around the Bridgewater Club. For obvious reasons, it at the time was our only golf cart community. And there was a lot of golf carts already in the community because of the golf course there. So basically, the Bridgewater Club, Brookside, Oak Manor jumped on board a little bit later. But those neighborhoods that surround Bridgewater were kind of part of that. And oh, by the way, the Midland Trace Trail was part of that ordinance. So the Midland Trace Trail from basically Cary Road to downtown Westfield has been legal for golf carts for going on seven and a half years now. It also included a limited number of exterior trails. And a lot of my Bridgewater residents, I think most of them left, but they probably don't realize that they're driving illegally on some paths because it is very confusing right now what is legal and what actually isn't. And we'll get into that here in just a little more detail in a minute. But basically, the eastern boundary, the southeastern portion of our city has had golf carts for many, many years. I understand why the last council didn't take this up. I was a member of that council. I wanted to take it up because I saw the inconsistencies in enforcement. I saw the bad behavior. I saw the culture that we're building in our community by not enforcing golf carts. But it is what it is. And after living this for the last several months, I certainly appreciate why they didn't, because it's highly controversial. And no matter what decision the council makes tonight, there are going to be some people who are going to be very angry. There'll be some people who are very happy, and it doesn't matter which direction they go, that's going to be the case. However, I'm not afraid to tackle controversial issues. And when I took office, I was committed to revisiting this ordinance. I want to tell you why. There's four reasons. First and foremost, I don't like an ordinance in our city that treats one side of the street differently from another. Literally, if you come out of the Bridgewater Club and you head south on Cary Road and you take a right or go east on 169th Street, if you're driving on the south side of the road, you are now illegal. And you could have your cart comp, you could be basically served in violation of our ordinance. If you proceed to the north side of the street, it's legal. I bet most of my Bridgewater residents don't even know that. And you can imagine how confusing it is for our police department to have a map that looks like Swiss cheese, and they're out there trying to enforce something that has no consistency to it whatsoever. Second, it makes enforcement incredibly difficult when one part of the city can drive golf carts and the other doesn't. It's discriminatory in nature, quite frankly. And if the city ever took a hard stance on golf carts, I bet we'd end up in court because we have a discriminatory law where a certain group of people around the Bridgewater Club can have golf carts and nobody else can. Third, the ordinance lacks teeth. There's a reason why, folks. Nobody's paying attention to the rules, because it's not enforceable. And and the and the rules that we do have don't have a lot of teeth. Fining people in the Bridgewater Club $100 for violations on their golf cart, while $100 to me is $100, for some people it may not be. And we have no way to take golf carts away. We have no way to suspend registration. The ordinance just didn't have it. And we needed to change that in order to hold our residents more accountable to the safety I think we all want on our trails. And then lastly, and I mentioned this early, it's a discriminatory law to say the Bridgewater can have golf carts, but Centennial cannot. And I hear people talking about elitists and only elite people drive golf carts because it's the only area that's legal right now. And we haven't afforded that freedom to other people in our community. And I just don't think it's good government to carve out a very limited area for your city to have a certain freedom and nobody else. So it's a horrible precedence. We built in a bad culture around golf carts, but this is the sandwich I have been dealt, and I have to take a bite out of it. And I have to govern this city. And I have to do it in a way that's fair and equitable. So I'm not afraid to take this liberty away from our residents. I'm not afraid to tell the people up in that corner of our city, sorry, it's been fun, but it's no longer legal. But to do that, for the government to step in and take away a freedom from residents because a portion of our population doesn't like it, is not good government. It's a slippery slope. We've looked at the data. We've looked at it nauseam. Some people here have commented about, some people understand it, some people don't. Here's the reality. In eight years, not a single resident has been hit by a golf cart. During that same period, I could show you examples of bikes hitting pedestrians, e-bikes hitting pedestrians, e-bikes hitting bikes, dogs tripping up walkers and bikers, dogs biting people. We got violations running out our ears. But I'm sorry, we have not had a single violation for golf carts. Now, I'm not here to tell you that we haven't had near misses. I'm not here to tell you that there hasn't been times where people have broken the rules and are just lucky they didn't get caught or lucky they didn't hurt somebody. But folks, that's the way it is in everything we do in this city, whether it's getting behind the wheel of a car, whether it's carrying a gun. There are many things in this country that are legal. And some people do it right, and some people do not. But I have to look at the data, and the data tells a story. And I can't disregard the fact that nobody has been hurt since. Will somebody get hurt in the future? I hope not. I hope not. If this passes, I hope it's safe. I hope everybody's respectful. If everybody's just neighborly and follows good common sense, this will be a wildly popular and safe ordinance. But if people don't, then it's going to be a nightmare. And that's something that the council and I are going to have to manage. If this passes, we're going to have to manage this in the future. And just because it passes today doesn't mean it's going to be legal tomorrow. Couple other things. Look, I'm passionate about golf carts. I've made it known. You can probably hear it in my voice. But the residents out there saying, I'm trying to line my pockets, or I'm trying to benefit myself, trust me when I say, this would have been so much easier for me to not do this. It's already legal for my neighborhood. I I enjoy golf carts. It's, I have that freedom. Many in this room do not. So to say that I'm going down this road because it benefits me, it actually doesn't benefit me to bring this out. I should have just left it alone and let Bridgewater folks have their freedom and everybody else can't. But that's not the way I'm going to govern as mayor. As long as I'm mayor, we're going to be fair, we're going to be equitable, and we're going to let everybody enjoy the freedoms that this country allows. I want to commend the council. They've taken, they've gotten beaten up a little bit. Oh, you're rushing it. Oh, you know, you haven't thought this through. In the history of the city of Westfield, we have never spent 18 months developing a policy around an ordinance. These folks have spent countless hours. They've done town hall meetings. They've visited other cities. Yes, Peachtree, Georgia is one of them. By the way, their trails are narrower. They allow unlicensed kids to drive golf carts. They don't have near the ordinance and structure that we're putting behind this. They've talked to other mayors in other cities in Indiana. Believe it or not, we won't be the first one. There are many cities in Indiana that allow it. They've answered hundreds of emails. They have thought this through. Is it a perfect ordinance? No, and it never will be. But I want to commend them because they're doing something here that is probably going to lose them a few votes if they pass it. And if they don't pass it, depending on where you live, you're probably going to lose a few votes. But they're doing the right thing by trying to create a fair and equitable law for everybody in our city. And again, no matter what the decision is tonight, we're going to make people mad. And I'm sorry for that. I truly do respect all the views on this. I understand some people just hate this, and I get that, and I appreciate that. Everything I do as mayor, quite frankly, I take arrows from some direction. There's not a decision I've made where people haven't gotten angry about it. It's the world I live in. I chose to run. Don't feel sorry for me. My wife certainly doesn't feel sorry for me. This is what I get paid to do. This is what I get paid to do, and this is what council gets paid to do. They get paid to make tough decisions, and this is probably the toughest decision they're all going to make tonight. But I can tell you, they've lost sleep over it. They've thought long and hard about it. I don't know how they're going to vote, but at the end of the day, I respect how they vote, and we'll move forward accordingly. Chief Keen's going to say a few comments, but before he does that, I'll hand it over to Councilor Woniger.
Fellow council members, mayor, members of the public that's here tonight and online, I'm before you tonight at the request of the council leadership to present on ordinance 2020, or 2530. I will cover the history, goals, what's not included in the ordinance, and then what is proposed in the ordinance, and then moving forward. My goal is not to interject opinion, but just factual information that is in the ordinance as presented tonight. As the mayor stated, the ordinance was originally approved by the city council in 2010. It has since then been revised two other times. There has been no updates since 2018, and the mayor explained a little bit in regards to that. Nearly 1,000 registered golf carts already in the city. City council members hosted four town hall listening tours with the Parks Department and Police Department. Residents have provided feedback via email, phone calls, text messages, mayor's town hall meetings, and social media. The goals of the ordinance was to provide for better permit identification of ownership. As has been mentioned here tonight, the little sticker is hard to read, the number's even smaller the more it says permit on the cart, on the golf cart sticker. So one of the goals was to have a better identified sticker that is able to be seen. We are recommending to the police department to have that visible on at least two sides of the golf cart and large enough to be able to seen, be seen by a pedestrian while they're walking or riding on the trail. We'll provide, this ordinance will provide transparent, enforceable regulations, fines, and accountability for misuse. The mayor talked a little bit about that. In the past, we've had an ordinance, but it had, did not have the teeth. Eliminate the use by minors, and those do not have a valid driver's license. So under this ordinance, you'll have to have a valid driver's license and be over the age of 16. Enhance safety requirements for those under the age of eight years old. Enhance police presence and interaction with residents and trail users. And increase connectivity between subdivisions and roadways under 25 miles an hour, and the mayor spoke a little bit in regards to that as well. Ensure golf carts are street legal. Educate the public and golf cart users where golf carts are permitted or allowed. What this ordinance does not permit, does not allow the use of golf carts on the Monon Trail, Asa Bells Trail, Natalie Wheeler Trail, or use in city-owned parks. Does not allow those under the age of 16 or non-licensed drivers to operate a golf cart. Does not restrict the use of e-pedestrian devices or e-devices on roadways, sidewalks, multi-use paths, or named trails. I think that was brought up a few times tonight. Does not allow, that is a, under a Parks ordinance, so that's why that's listed under Parks ordinance. Does not allow golf carts on sidewalks less than five feet, on private property or private residential trails, or on trails in Grand Park. And then the hours of operation on named trails is a, in a Parks ordinance that will be brought back to revision by the Parks Board and then for consideration. So the current proposed ordinance that follows state statute, designate all roads under 25 miles an hour, which is currently under the current ordinance, identifies multi-use paths, also known as perimeter trails, and authorized named trails at 15 miles per hour or less. Adds rearview mirror to the list of required equipment. That's on top of headlights, brakes, and taillights. Again, no child less than eight years old is permitted on a, to ride on a golf cart unless safely secured with appropriate safety device. Required initial inspection of $100, biannual inspections of 50, and then police departments will administer the inspections and permit. Current ordinance, operators must be 16 years of age and possess a valid driver's license. Carry liability insurance in the amount not less than the minimum of the state of Indiana requires for automobiles. Operators shall obey all traffic laws, yield the right of ways to pedestrians and bicycles. Golf carts may not be operated on roadways during inclement weather, that'd be rain, fog, ice, or snow. Golf carts may accommodate as many passengers as, golf carts may only accommodate as many passengers as the golf cart is designated for, are designed for. Current proposed ordinance enforcement, mayor spoke a little bit about this earlier. The ordinance, any ordinance, or any violation of this ordinance shall be punishable by a fine not to exceed that of a Class C infraction as defined by Indiana Code. Any violation shall be punishable by a fine not to exceed $100 for the first offense, $150 for the second, $300 for the third or subsequent, consequential offense, as well as all fees associated with the enforcement of this ordinance. Any operator who has issued three offense or violations of this ordinance shall be, shall have their permit revoked for a period of one year from the date of revocation. A parent, adult guardian may not authorize or knowingly allow a golf cart owner or owned by the person under the person's control to be operated by a person who does not have the legal right to do so. Carts are subject to impalement and all associated fees with the enforcement of this ordinance. Any operator of a golf cart in violation of this ordinance may be issued a citation to appear in a city court or a court of competent jurisdiction. Future considerations, review this ordinance regularly and make improvements and additions to the existing ordinance. Review and update park ordinance. Address other issues that are identified that currently occur on trails with other electric equipment, devices, e-bikes, e-motocycles, e-scooters, e-skateboards, e-unicycles, segways, and anything else. Develop metrics. That's one of the things I've asked, I met with the chief, to develop metrics around these golf carts that we can track and better have, better identification. And I've spoken with some of the council members in regard to that, and they're in support of that. And then continue to receive input from citizens, city staff, police, and Parks Department. That concludes my presentation, and I will turn it now over to the chief of police, Sean Keen.
Members of the council, Mayor Sean Keen, Chief, Westfield Police Department. You know, I've been a policeman in Indiana for now for almost 28 years. I served Terre Haute for 26, that, 10 of that as assistant chief, six as chief. I spent a lot of time before councils, different ordinances, everything from a casino to new secondhand dealer permits, just a lot of different things. And one thing that I've learned throughout that process is that as the police chief, my personal opinion is irrelevant. I'm a public servant, and what I think personally does not count. That being said, what you should be concerned about from me is what I think from a professional capacity. And so that's what I want to address here. It seems pretty clear based on the testimony that we've heard here today that a lot of the concern is how will the police department enforce this ordinance? I've heard a lot of anecdotal comments about the police department not being capable of doing that, and so I want to address that here with you now. First off, I think the easiest thing, unfortunately, I think on the 11th, I'm to come back and address you with our five-year strategic plan. That would give you some background into our steps forward. Since we'll have to wait till the 11th to do that, there are parts of that that I think are relevant to your assessment of this ordinance, and that's how we're going to handle patrols in our neighborhoods as well as through our trail systems. So to understand that, the biggest thing is we have to do a change in our policing philosophy. When I came here last year as chief, that's one of the things I did as far as reorganizing the department. I also looked at how we were conducting patrols. And so, so that you have some background and you understand how patrols have traditionally been done here, our city at this point has about 30 square miles of patrol area, and that includes some of the annexed areas, I think it was over 27. I think we're right around 30 at this point. The way the police department has traditionally done that, they are, the city is divided into five patrol districts. There are three west of 31, and there are two east of 31. Now, when an officer's assigned to patrol district, they're charged with the responsibilities of the reports that occur in that, that area, that geographical area. However, traditionally, they have not been required to stay in that area. So if I'm in one of the western areas, for example, one of the western districts, I may be responsible for taking reports there, but I don't have to stay there during my shift. I can go anywhere in the city. That's inherently a problem when you're talking about policing. And I'll put it to you in this context. Last council meeting, Chief Galore presented to you a plan for the fire department expanding that. I would have put, I would put it to you, what if he told you, I got a better idea. I'm going to build one big firehouse. And we're going to save money. Just one big firehouse, all the firefighters will go in there and they'll respond to everybody. That's got to be a huge savings. Unfortunately, you can see the problem right away with that, response times. It's great if you live around the firehouse, but not so great if you live on the other side of the city. So that's, you can apply that same thing to policing. If I'm in a district on the western edge, but I'm not required to stay there, and much of the activity of the police department, say it occurs around 31, there's traffic stops, there's something else going on, I'm naturally, as a policeman, going to want to migrate over to what's going on. I've been a policeman for a long time. I know how police think. So what happens when you have a traffic stop and you have four policemen on it? Sometimes it's necessary. Sometimes we just want to be part of it and be there to help. But the problem is, when I'm away from my district, we're not giving equal protection to the other districts, right? If we're always on this one side, we're always over here where a lot of activity occurs, then I'm not patrolling my district all the time. I may go there to take a report, but then I may be right back out of it. So our policing philosophy has to change in that regard. We have to be more adaptable, and ours is going to be more focused on community-based policing. So what that means is, in the future, as we assign districts to officers, they will be assigned, and they will have to remain in that district unless they're called out for another call. But we want more than that. We want them to be engaged with their communities, their neighborhoods in that district, and their trail systems. If there's trails in that district, we are responsible as a police department to patrol everything, not just the things that we think we can or can't patrol. But a big step in making that happen, or reality, is we have to stay in our districts. We have to take care of those districts. Now, what we're working on now with the command staff is we're going to reorganize those five districts into four larger districts, and then we'll have overlapping districts for overlapping coverage. With that, though, the expectation is going forward that if you're in a district, like I said, you can take 20 minutes out of your 12-hour patrol shift to walk a neighborhood, to check a trail. So that is the first step in our process and changing our mindset on how we're policing. The current model is just not sustainable. I'm sure it was fine five, 10 years ago, when the population density was far less, the roadways were smaller here, but it's just not sustainable. As we get more and more people here, we cannot allow, you know, our patrol districts to just to be the whole city. We have to be more focused on our neighborhoods, and we have to focus our patrols in those areas. So that's the first step, is changing our mindset as far as policing is concerned. There are some other things. I recognize that we do get busy. That, that's without a doubt. Our officers get busy sometimes to where it's not cap, we're not capable of doing an extra patrol here or there. So in those circumstances, we want to augment those primary patrols with something you'll see in my proposal for my budget for next year, which is between April and November, we want to have no less than two to three, four-hour details, overtime details, that will strictly target our trail system. So that will allow officers to sign up for those in those circumstances where, you know, the shifts are busy, we're going to augment with at least two to three every week between April and November, to enhance those patrols on our, specifically targeting the trail systems. In addition to that, one of the things we've been working on with our Citizens Alumni Association is, they are so great. They help us with so many things, so many activities. We have been exploring with them the ability that they would be somewhat of a citizen's patrol on some of the trails. Not necessarily that they would confront people violations, but they would be an extra set of eyes that could report back to the officers in case there's a danger, there's activity on those trails. We've just layered our approach to this. The next thing that we're looking at is adding cameras, portable cameras, that we can move around the trails, much like we do with the speed cameras throughout the city. That was something that this council helped us with last year. We now have eight of those. We also want to expand some of our cameras, so that those problem areas on the trails that we find to be problems, that we can deploy those and get even more intel on where we need to direct patrols. So expanding technology is a big part of that. When we talk about, you know, the police department being responsible for issuing these, these tags, I don't know how familiar you are with the past practice of that, but what's been happening with that is those go into an Excel spreadsheet, which is pretty much unusable if you're an officer in the field, and you need to, you're out on a particular golf cart, for example, and you need to know whose it is, where it came from. So what we're exploring now is putting that into our records management system so the officers can access that directly from the field. It's just enhancing a lot of how we're responding to things. The last thing that I'll talk about, touch upon as far as our strategic plan and how this fits into it is messaging. There's got to be a lot better education on this whole process. And one of the things that I will focus on more than anything is parents. Parents have to be responsible for their kids. If your child is not old enough and does not possess a driver's license to drive your car, they cannot drive a golf cart. Parents have to do our, we have to do our job on that, too, and that's not permit that type of activity. We talked a lot about e-bikes. I can tell you that that's becoming more and more of a problem. Just a few months ago in Terre Haute, there were two 13-year-old girls that were on an e-bike, ran a stop sign into an ambulance, and they lost their lives. Those e-bikes can be very dangerous. Unfortunately, they're kind of regulated by state statute. If you're not familiar with it, there's three classes of e-bikes. The first two are those that can't go over 20 miles per hour. Those by state statute don't require a license, they don't require insurance, and they, if you accept bikes on the trail, the state statute says you have to accept e-bikes that are Class 1 or Class 2. A Class 3 e-bike is a little different. It can go up to 28 miles per hour. On those, there are restrictions. Those under 15 years of age cannot drive them. Those under 18 years of age are required to wear a helmet when they're on them. So there are some things that we need to look at as we move forward when we do these patrols. And the way that we're going to focus on these patrols, these extra four-hour blocks, is that we're equipping two e-bikes and three golf carts with the necessary equipment that we can issue citations from the trails and enforcement of these projects. So the things that I'm talking to you about now are going to occur regardless of what you do with this ordinance. This is our strategic plan. I will present more of it to you on the 11th, but I want you to have a good understanding of what we are doing as a police department as far as our strategic plan and how we're changing how we police the individual neighborhoods and the trail systems. So with that, I know that you may have more specific questions. I just want to put that out there first so you understand where we're moving to as a department.
Chief, I have a couple of questions. So if somebody's operating a golf cart intoxicated, while the ordinance doesn't address it for legal reasons, can you just educate the public what happens there?
Yeah, state law covers that. It doesn't matter if it's a golf cart or you're on a lawnmower, you can get a DUI for that.
So my next question then would be texting and driving, it's hands-free. Actually, our former mayor, Mayor Cook, was a big proponent of that state law change. What happens if somebody's texting and driving, if they're driving a golf cart?
It's covered, golf carts are covered under that hands-free as well, as long as they're on the public roadway.
Chief, if I can also add, the law says that the city cannot prescribe penalties for things that are already state laws like this. So that's the reason things like that aren't included, they can't be.
Correct. So then my next question is an insurance question. You may know this through practical experience, but if you're 14, 12 years of age, and your golf cart is covered on insurance, would an insurance company cover, this is really for the parents, a 12-year-old driving a golf cart who has an accident?
I'm not an insurance agent, but my experience with insurance companies are they're going to pay as little as they have to, so... they're gonna pay as little as they have to, so they're probably not gonna cover that, but again, I'm not an insurance agent.
That's been my experience on a certain house issue right now, but we'll, we'll talk about that some other day, but yeah, they, they don't like to pay.
I think some of that comes to a knowing aspect, whether you knowingly let your child drive it.
And to my left is a trial lawyer.
Yes.
He's available. He's damn good, by the way. We do rely on him as well. The April, is that April to October, or, did I hear that correct?
Yes, April through November, I'm sorry.
April through November, thank you. A recent issue that we're seeing, too, is, and Counselor Huff may be able to talk a little bit more about this than, than I am, motorbikes that are approaching speeds of 50 miles per hour, they're, they're electric. We're seeing them, I mean frankly, I have pictures of them now on neighborhood Facebook pages, where they're going about 50 miles per hour. It's a, it's a different type of, type of bike than an e-bike. It's rated, but clearly people are purchasing.
My guess is without knowing specifically what you're talking about, that's gonna fit under the definition of motor vehicle under the state side. The speed alone is gonna put it above like an e-bike, so I'm guessing it's gonna be regulated as a motor vehicle, would be my guess.
There's motor-driven cycles, too, like mopeds, it's probably in that category.
So that would be the same, that's what we were talking about, Chad?
Yeah, those CERONs aren't street legal at the moment, so it wouldn't be in the same classification as a moped, because that's still registered with the license and stuff. You don't have to have a driver's license, but it still has a license plate. But those CERONs are non-pedal assist, they're pretty fast. I mean, you take two wires and cross them, and you've got 53 miles an hour out of one. So not, not, not great for kids to be running around on the street for those.
One thing I'll throw in there, too, while we're talking about enforcement, and this is a lesson learned from Peachtree, Georgia. When you register your golf cart in Peachtree, you'll get a number assigned to your golf cart, and it's a, it's a pretty sizable number. Why is that important? Because if you call in the police, there's a green golf cart with a Bridgewater sticker running too fast on the Midland, that probably narrowed our thousand golf carts down to about 400. And it's really, really hard to hold anybody accountable under that kind of scenario. So I know Counselor Dart's been a big advocate of, of coming up with a numbering system that's visible in a place that not only the trail cams can pick up, but also residents. So if you're, if somebody zips through you and clips the side of your bike, you're gonna be able to get a number from that golf cart and be able to call in and report it to the police. And now there's, there's a bit more of accountability piece to it than trying to describe, again, a lot of golf carts look the same, and it's really incredibly hard to distinguish who's driving what.
Any other questions, comments for Chief Keen? So the Class C infraction language, Caitlin, I mean, we omitted some of that.
That's been removed. So it would not be an infraction, that is a state violation. I think what it used to say, we can fine you for an ordinance violation up to the amount of a Class C infraction. Now it's that scaled 100, 150, 300, and then, as has been discussed, the revocation and the impoundment in certain circumstances, but the Class C infraction language is gone from this version.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Keen? Mayor, would you like any other additional comments?
Uh, no, I don't have anything else.
Any counselor comments this evening? Counselor McCarty?
I'll just ask two quick questions in regards to, bless you, questions that were asked earlier this evening. One, in regards to modified golf carts, the word modified and anything in regards to other types of recreational vehicles, et cetera. That specific word itself is not within the ordinance, so I just, again, didn't know how we're gonna address that in the future. And then, two, I just, not to really dig in too much on the map, but I just wanna make sure things are correlating, that within the presentation, it said that the Natalie Wheeler Trail was not permitted, whereas on the map, Natalie Wheeler is highlighted. So I just wanna make sure we're, we're doing all our checks and balances before getting anything considered, so thank you.
And I'll address the Natalie Wheeler. Actually, Natalie Wheeler is not highlighted, it's Union. And so the goal, the thought is, and this was coming anyways with what we're trying to do to slow traffic on Union Street and push it to Westfield Boulevard, we, Jonathan Neal, when he proposes his new ordinance, he does every year around traffic, speed limits, all that, we'll be reducing that speed limit on Union. So as of right now, the Natalie Wheeler is not in play. Keep in mind, folks, that, that's an ugly map right up there, I mean, it looks like spaghetti. It's really hard to zoom in and see things clearly, so if this passes, one thing I don't know if Counselor Wanniger mentioned, but this will not go into effect until November 1st, which is basically outside of golf cart usage in Westfield. So it gives the city time to, one, communicate what this map is really saying, what areas are off and on limits, or are available and not available, to talk about the education piece, to talk about rules of the road. And quite frankly, we have to put the infrastructure in place. Even in District 1, where it's legal, there is very little infrastructure around golf carts. That S-curve on Midland, it's dangerous, I hate it. I hate it as a runner, I hate it as a walker, I hate it as a biker, and I hate it as a golf cart user, and like Ms. Hyatt said, I do all the above on the Midland Trace Trail. We're talking about mirrors and, and better warning devices and better visibility for our residents, so when you come into that area, it's just not so daunting and dangerous. So we've got work to do, but there is a reason why we've said we're not gonna take this into effect if it passes. Until then, it gives us time to do the right things to set this, this up for failure, or I'm sorry, success instead of failure.
So going back to the Natalie Wheeler Trail, if it's a street, it should be yellow, but it's shown as green, so that's where the confusion, I think, is happening there. So I don't know if we need to amend that before voting tonight?
I don't think the map is what we're voting on, we're voting on the ordinance. The map is obviously a visual, but we've got some work to do, and I, I bet we'll find, as we've been going through this with a fine-tooth comb, we've had many people, you all have looked at, I've had many people, my staff, look at, and I bet there's still some problems and mistakes out there, so we need to work on that.
Yeah, well, the ordinance alludes to Exhibit A, so can you throw some light on that?
Yes, you should definitely mention it. If there's any revisions, I would get those on the record, including the change you just talked about to the map, since it is an exhibit.
So, so we wanna make sure that that color is then done appropriate, where it may have been done incorrect. The other piece, too, is that we can always bring back Exhibit A at a later date as we find to comb all the GIS fund here.
That's correct. You can amend the ordinance via another ordinance at any time, including the exhibit.
Okay. Counselor Herron, so we can always, we can talk about it tonight, no issue. We can also, when we find other issues, we can always come back and amend Exhibit A, if you will, to reflect some issues that, let's say, somebody comes across, whatever those may be.
Right now, Union is, right now, Union is not 25 miles an hour, and we're not including the Natalie Wheeler.
The Natalie Wheeler is off limits.
And Union's not 25.
It is part of the proposed map, but we have work to do, just like with the speed limits, it has to go through another layer of government. And again, if, if you guys would vote down that ordinance, which has, it's a mul, it's dozens and dozens of pages of stuff, if for some reason you guys wanna carve that out, then we'd have to bring this back for you guys to look at, but the intent is, and the intent, quite frankly, regardless of golf carts, that's coming to you all, we're lowering that speed limit, we've been talking about it a long time, and there's a lot of reasons for it. We're trying to slow traffic down on Union Street. But that, again, that's another layer, just like the hours of operation that would have to go through the Parks Board, this has to come through a separate ordinance.
Caitlin, I hate to put you on the spot, but I like to do that, don't I? In, in the future, would it make more sense to bring this proposed golf cart routes map back with the traffic regulations ordinance on an annual basis, as new trails are being added, or new roads are being added? Because when that traffic regulation, regulations ordinance comes to us every year, we're adding the streets with the speed limits, with the stop signs, that the police department can enforce, as well as then include the trails as part of, or the multi-use pass and other things as part of that as well.
I think you could word it in a way to say that part of whatever this ordinance, 2530, I think, is being amended, just the exhibit. So I think as long as it comes through as an ordinance, if you wanna package it that way, I wouldn't have any problem with it.
Okay, thanks.
Any other conversation this evening, comments? Chief, I think you're good to, I, I usually don't tell police officers that they're done, but you can do whatever you want, chief, but.
I noticed in there that we've got perimeter trails still at 25, why the named trails at 15? Is, is that intentional for a reason, or any kind of oversight there?
Honestly, I don't think we really ever discussed it in regards to, we talked about the, the name trails being at 15, and we talked about the roads being 25, and I think the multi-use perimeter pass just fell in that 25 mile power, mile per hour speed limit as well. So I don't think we probably put as much thought into that as what we probably should have.
Yeah, and I honestly misread it. After it was brought up, like, I thought it was 15 miles per hour, so I mean, I would be in favor of reducing the perimeter trails down to 15 miles per hour, along with the named trails, and then keeping the roads at 25 miles per hour, personally.
Chad, you bring up a good point. I mean, it, it would, would it do also, if somebody did wanna go faster than 15, and they're on a trail, but there's a road right adjacent to it, 25, they'll go to the road instead of on the trail. But if you wanna be safe, safer, you might stay on the trail at 15 than go onto the road, so.
Caitlin, can we add, potentially consider adding that into the amended?
Yes, so I would also say, because there've been changes since the first reading, that there be a motion.
I got that covered.
Okay, I would include that with that piece, then.
Okay.
So I would have, is that okay, for the record, I would have it all packaged up, where those changes between the readings and what you just discussed would be what's before you for a vote.
So what Caitlin is discussing, that is, we will need, if we consider this, this evening, we'll need two motions. One will be a motion to amend the original ordinance as introduced, then if that is successful, which we will include the new language that is in front of us this evening, potentially pending conversation with council here this evening, reducing perimeter trails to 15 miles per hour, which would be part of the amendment. Then at the same time, if that is agreed upon by the majority of the council, then we would have to have a second motion to vote as amended, if everyone follows that. So it would be a two, two-step process.
Would we need to say anything about the current map in Union Street and how it's mislabeled from green to yellow, and just leave that alone for tonight?
I would include that in, in the motion to amend as well.
Because, because as you correctly pointed out, Counselor Herron, I think, it refers to Exhibit A, so. No, I, I would roll that into one, as long as everyone agrees.
And it does say in the ordinance that you can't use it on the Natalie Wheeler, so I think that makes sense to try to align the, the language and the attachment, so.
So we'll need a motion to amend ordinance 2530 as originally introduced, to include the perimeter trails to 15 miles per hour, as well as updating Exhibit A, which is the Natalie Wheeler Trail is not permitted, but then also the correction on the color, if you will, on Union.
I'll make a motion to, for, to update ordinance 2530 as presented, to add, or change the speed limit on perimeter trails from 15, or from 25 to 15, and then update the Exhibit A map to include or exclude the portions of the Natalie Wheeler Trail.
I believe so. So we have a motion, we need a second?
Second.
We have a motion made by Counselor Wanniger, a second by Counselor Herron. Any other discussion this evening?
I'll just say that after 18 months of lots of hours put into this, that we're making two amendments on the day of the vote, so just express my frustration with everyone right now.
So we have a motion and a second. Seeing no, no other discussion, may we call the roll?
Joe Deppner.
And I understand this is specifically just for the two amendments, correct? No. No, for the.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Noah Herron?
Yes.
Chad Huff? Victor McCarty?
No.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger?
Yes.
Okay, and I cannot call on Mr. Dart, is that, or I can for this one? Okay. John Dart?
Yes.
I can't see you just yet, give us one second. There we go, I can see you now, I'll call you one more time, John Dart?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Motion carries seven, oh, sorry, five to two.
So the motion, the ordinance has been amended at this time, now we need to further consider it a motion to adopt as amended.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2530 as amended.
Second. We have a motion made by Counselor Wanniger, a second by Counselor Deppner. Any further discussion this evening? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Chad Huff?
No.
Victor McCarty?
No.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger?
Yes.
I am skipping Mr. Dart this time. Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Herron?
Yes.
Motion to pass the golf cart ordinance as amended has passed four to two.
Thank you. We'll move on to ordinance 2536, which is the 2025 First Amended SALLY Ordinance. Tonight, that will be presented by Danielle Carey-Tolan.
For, for the record, Danielle Carey-Tolan. We have before you the amended salary ordinance, it kind of passed through us real quickly. This is, really, we just added the Police and Fire Merit Board to our ordinance for them to get a stipend for their pay.
Any conversation, questions this evening?
This is John Dart. Am I eligible to vote on this, or because it's a fee, I can't do that either?
Yes, we actually, Marla and I just talked about this. Budgets are different, but there's nothing about a salary ordinance, so you can vote.
Thank you.
See, any discussion this evening on the SALLY ordinance as proposed? Seeing no discussion, we need a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 25-36.
Motion made by Counselor Wanniger, a second by Counselor Herron. Seeing no other discussion, may we call the roll?
Noah Herron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next order of business is ordinance 2542, which is approving the Economic Development Bonds for the Jersey 32 Project. This evening, we have Mr. Meeks from Barnes &amp; Thornburg.
Council President Tam and council members, Dustin Meeks from Barnes &amp; Thornburg. There have been no changes to the ordinance from its first reading. It approves up to $16 million of economic development revenue bonds with a 25-year life at a maximum interest rate of 8% for this project, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
And these are developer-city backed?
They are developer-purchased.
Correct. Any discussion this evening from Mr. Meeks, questions? We need a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2542.
Second. A motion made by Counselor McCarty, a second by Counselor Deppner. Seeing no other conversation, may we call the roll?
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Herron?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Councilor.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Meeks. Resolution 25143, which is confirmatory resolution creation of Eagle Town Revitalization Area and I-III Investors LLC Real Property Tax Abatement. We'll have a quick presentation by Claire Jellinas.
For the record, Claire Jellinas, City of Westfield Economic Development Team. So the resolution before you, this is the same criteria and information that I presented on for the declaratory resolution. Tonight is the confirmatory resolution. on for the declaratory resolution. Tonight is the confirmatory resolution with the public hearing for the ERA piece. So the resolution is twofold, the first one being the creation of the Eagle Town Economic Revitalization Area. As you can see, that's outlined in yellow. It's about twenty-seven acres and it encompasses the Trailside Business Center project that has been presented on previously. It's along State Road Thirty-two, just west of the Curly Brothers site. Oh, sorry. Trailside Business Center is a proposed enclosed industrial trail to park with four speculative buildings, meaning that they have no end user or tenant at this time identified. Phase one will begin on the west side of the development and includes two spec buildings totaling approximately one hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred square feet with anticipated ten and a half million dollars of real property investment. The site improvement plans, as outlined in the PUD that you've heard previously, also include trail-oriented public amenities, site infrastructure upgrades to support phases one and two, enhanced landscaping and pedestrian-oriented connections between the businesses and the trail. Phase one project is anticipated to start in April twenty-twenty-six and will be completed in December of twenty-twenty-seven. Phase two, which is on the east side of the property, has two other speculative industrial buildings totaling approximately one hundred and eighty-two thousand square feet with anticipated thirteen million of real property investment. Phase two is slated to begin in April twenty-twenty-eight and will be completed in December of twenty-nine. The slide also shows the recommended fourteen percent step-down real property abatement schedule for each of the phases for your adoption consideration tonight. We're including both phase one and phase two abatement recommendation because I-Three is making a significant investment in the Midland Trace Trail improvements, utility extensions, traffic improvements, walking trail to connect the Midland Trace to State Road Thirty-two, and the constructions of the four industrial speculative buildings. Based on today's number, when the project is fully complete, we estimate it will generate approximately twenty-one point three million dollars in assessed value. Just some final thoughts. So our department tracks all the leads that we receive to identify real estate trends. The graph on the top left shows the lead trends for clients seeking only existing buildings for their future project. So far in twenty-twenty-five, sixty-seven percent of clients were searching for a building no larger than a hundred thousand square feet, which was a total of about sixty-one leads looking for only that existing building in twenty-twenty-five so far. As compared to twenty-twenty-four, fifty-eight percent of clients wanted a building no larger than the a hundred thousand square feet, and we had a total of ninety leads looking for that existing building footprint in twenty-twenty-four. So I also took a quick inventory, I updated this slide from the previous meeting just to identify all the existing industrial buildings available in Westfield. And right now, we only have six, and they total from, or they range from four thousand square feet to that ninety-nine thousand square foot floor plate. So, and you can see at the bottom left that the proposed building sizes for the Trailside Business Center do fill a gap in our local industrial market and can help bring more industry to our economy. So all in all, from an economic development perspective, this project brings significant investment to the community, can become a catalyst for future development opportunities surrounding the property, and increases our industrial building stock so we can become more competitive in the market. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Claire, the only question I have, with the phase one, if the developer doesn't move forward with the phase two, is that transfer to a new developer builder, or is he bound by that first phase and the second phase would not, would have to come back in front of us?
So he is bound by that first phase to complete the second phase. That's part of the overall project agreement. If phase two does not come to fruition, they do not get any other incentives.
But does it transfer to another, if they sell it?
If they sell it, yes. Because the, the abatement stays with the physical land itself. But we have to make sure, because they do submit the SB one forms, that the new developer, if that ever happens, has to follow what that criteria was outlined.
But if that developer came back and changed the plan?
We would come back here.
Yes. Thank you.
Claire, I've got a question. This is John.
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure you could hear me.
Yeah, I just can't see you.
Okay, generally, abatements go back to the customer, go back to the tenant, or the, these, these abatements are being used for improvements on the property, I get it, but the tenants that come into this, these facilities don't get any benefit of the abatement. Is that correct?
I don't know the deal structure that I-Three is putting together for their end users. We would hope that maybe some of the benefits, the tax benefits that the developer does receive, would eventually trickle down to the end user, but because I-Three is making such significant investments into improving the property overall, I'm not really sure. I cannot comment on, on what that deal structure will look like.
But, but just to be clear, that is the role of a developer, to invest. And to take, to take TIF dollars to pay for what should be their responsibility is, I guess, not, not what I thought these dollars should be used for. This is to entice tenants, good businesses. That's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to attract, our businesses that want to move to Westfield. And if we don't know that these dollars are going to be used to bring these businesses in, I don't think that's a good use of TIF.
So this is not TIF money. This is a real property abatement, which is a phasing in-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, abatement, I'm sorry. You are correct. This is not, this is abatement. I meant, I still meant the same thing, but I used the wrong terminology.
It's okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And one, one piece that we're really seeing in the market is that most deals that come across our desk want a physical building to move into because of speed of market. And so our industrial stock currently, as we saw even from our comprehensive plan, we just don't have a lot. And so we cannot compete against, you know, cities that are really close to us in the market because we don't have a lot to offer. And so we feel like this project will help create more competitiveness in our local economy. It also is trail-oriented, which is unique in that a lot of tenants that we're seeing, those high-end headquarters, they want these amenities for their employees to be able to walk around, you know, during lunch breaks and stuff. So I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. And, and John, I, John, I would agree with your thought process on that as well, if we did have an inventory stock available in our community, if this was the tenth project that was coming and we had thirty buildings out there that had that availability to, you know, come back for this, I, I would not be in favor of, of this type of structure. But since we don't have that inventory within our system, I think this will help incentivize other businesses to come to Westfield and to move forward. So I, I agree with your thought process, but I also agree with Janelle, Claire's analysis of what she gave as well as regarding our inventory.
Well, I, I don't disagree with the comments that the two of you made, but this then assumes that any developer who wants to come in and build a similar project in the city of Westfield is going to ask for an abatement. And that, I think that opens a slippery slope if it's not going to the tenants.
John, this is Chip Barnes with I-Three Investors, just to address your comment there. The tax abatement is an offset for some of the off-site costs to extend the utilities to this site. It is passed through to the tenant, so it's part of the occupancy cost of the tenant. So they pay as part of their rent, they pay rent, and then they pay the operating expenses on the building. So insurance, exterior maintenance on the property, real estate taxes, that's all part of their rent structure. So this is an offset for, to attract tenants to these, these properties. It lowers the occupancy cost on the front end for these tenants. So it is passed through directly to the tenants, and it's an incentive for attracting tenants to this property.
So just so we understand, for John, I, I think what you're saying is, through, through the triple nets that you're going to pass on to your tenants, you're only going to charge them the percentage according to your abatement?
Correct. So, you know, it's, it's substantially cut down when, on the front end of the leases.
Right.
So, so how does that help you pay for the utilities, then?
It's just, so if I add, you know, a couple, let's just say, just use around numbers, if it's a couple million dollars of additional cost to the project, which makes your basis of your project higher, which means you have to charge even more rent to offset those costs. So by lowering that, you know, obviously offsetting some of that additional cost, it lowers the, the rent or lowers the price of entry to, for the property. We're, again, this is very comparable to any, any of the surrounding communities. You go to Noblesville, you go to Fishers, this is a similar tax abatement structure that all of the communities are using here.
It's currently, Chip, there's no utilities in this vicinity. I mean, you're running utilities from the north, I believe?
North, northwest from Ditch Road, a little over two million dollars of, of utility extension costs to get that to that area along State Road Thirty-two.
And I think it's worth mentioning, too, I mean, we all know State Road Thirty-two is a very important corridor for Westfield. I don't think we want to see, continue to see fast food restaurants, banks, CVSs. We love them all, we need them all, but we don't want to see that extend all the way to Boone County. This hasn't developed for a reason. The entry point to development has been extremely high because we have not ran utilities that far out, out west along State Road Thirty-two. So this will help reduce that cost and, and will help the project pencil. I don't think they can even do the project without it, quite frankly. Because I know when they talked to us about originally, they said if that's not on the table, there's no reason to continue. And, and we've been approached by other developers and, and similar things have happened where just the projects, they just don't pencil. This is a necessary piece to get this off the ground.
Any other comments this evening? We need to conduct a public hearing as well this evening, so I'm going to open up the public hearing this evening at ten oh one PM. Anyone that would like to comment on this matter, resolution twenty-five one forty-three, we need to be welcome to step forward. Everybody knows I like public comments. So we'll close the public hearing at ten oh two PM this evening. We'll, now the matter is eligible for adoption, as is a resolution this evening. We need a motion and a second?
Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-five dash one forty-three.
Second. We have a motion made by Council Wanniger, seconded by Council McCarty. Seeing no other conversation, may we call the roll?
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Haron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Our next order of business, resolution twenty-five one forty-five, which is having council of the city of Westfield in New York declaring interest in and authorizing the purchase of specified land this evening, presented by our Parks Director, Mr. McConnell.
Mayor, councilors, evening. For the record, Chris McConnell, Director of Parks and Recreation for the city of Westfield. As stated, the resolution before you is to declare interest and authorize the purchase of land, roughly twenty-two and a half acres on the northwest corner of one hundred and eighty-sixth and Casey Road for a future park site. And I would be happy to answer questions if there are any at this time.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Any questions this evening?
Not a question, just kind of more so a statement, because I've been waiting for this for a long time, and I'm, I'm really thankful that this is coming into fruition. Really, the only reason, one of two reasons why I supported the Winterburg development last year was, one, because we need the infrastructure out there, and, and two, I, I really saw this area as prime location for a potential park for our residents. This has been quite literally my backyard my entire life. I know I've said this before, but this is in fact true. It's just very special, and I appreciate this is happening. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion this evening? I would just like to buy more park land, that's fine. We need a motion and a second?
Motion to approve resolution twenty-five one forty-five.
Second. A motion made by Council McCarty, seconded by Council Huff. Seeing no other conversation this evening, may we call the roll?
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Haron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Our next order of business, ordinance twenty-five forty-four, which is North Point Two, Phase Two Annexation. Quick presentation this evening.
Thank you, President. Members of the council. For the record, Ryan Collingwood with the Community Development Department. The item before you is a one-hundred percent voluntary annexation request for the North Point Two, Phase Two planned development area. The annexation will be brought forth via ordinance twenty-five dash forty-four. For further context on the petition, the first initial phase of the North Point Two annexation area was approved via ordinance twenty-five dash nineteen on April twenty-eighth earlier this year. We had to split it up due to continuity requirements at the state. The total compiled annexation area is about one hundred and fifty-nine point eight acres in size. The parcels are generally located on the north side of State Road Thirty-eight and generally northeast of the first approved phase of the annexation. Additional context can be seen in more detail within the provided location map exhibit on the screen. This item has been noted for a public hearing this evening and has been properly noted and advertised that will be eligible for adoption at your first August meeting in two weeks' time, where we will also present the fiscal plan. I am available for questions if you have any, if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. We do need to conduct a public hearing this evening as well on this matter, so we'll open up the public hearing at ten oh six PM. We will go ahead and close the public hearing at ten oh six PM as well. This is an ordinance that will be eligible for consideration on our August eleventh meeting upcoming. Our next ordinance is ordinance twenty-five forty-five, which is Chatham Hills PUD Amendment, the Ivy Ridge Preserve. I believe we have a quick presentation as well about this this evening.
Yeah, good evening. For the record, Kevin Todd with Community Development Department. I'll be brief. The item for you this evening is an amendment to the Chatham Hills PUD to add approximately twelve acres to the PUD ordinance, which would allow for the addition of up to three new single-family residential lots. They would have a minimum lot size of ninety thousand square feet, which is just a little bit over two acres each. Again, that's the minimum. They would require to be built in accordance with the architectural standards of the Chatham Hills PUD. Access to the lots would be from the south, from extending Ivy, Ivy Ridge here, as shown on the map, to the north, to access all three of the parcels that would be created by this amendment. And this item is scheduled to be before the Plan Commission at their August fourth public hearing meeting for that, for that item. Mr. Dobishewitz with Nelson and Frankenberger is here to provide some additional details. Yep.
Our presentation this evening, as Kevin indicated, is for introduction of amendment to the Chatham Hills PUD. The area you see outlined here is that twelve and a half acres. As originally proposed, the plan was to have four lots with one lot that would have access to State Road Thirty-eight. Based upon additional consideration, Jason made the decision to have it just be three lots. We had a neighborhood meeting last week where he received a considerable amount of discussion with the adjoining neighbors about a hill to the east that presents site difficulties in their estimation. Based on that, as well as additional feedback from staff, Jason made the decision to incorporate that area north of the creek. If you're familiar with the area, there's a flood zone that runs the, the middle of the central lot, and not have that detached, but have it adjoined with the area to the south. So there would be a maximum of three lots. All three would have access to the south through Ivy Ridge into Chatham. All three lots are subject to the covenants and restrictions, as well as the architectural standards for Chatham Hills. Construction of the first home was anticipated later this year. It would be on the center lot. That lot's approximately seven acres in size. The lots on either side of it are between two and three acres in area. And if you have additional questions, be glad to answer those. We are potentially going to ask the Plan Commission to suspend its rules at its meeting next Monday. I know you don't have an impact on that. In the event they do, we would be back to you at your second meeting in August for adoption consideration. With that, I'll conclude.
John, the private drive that extends from the cul-de-sac, I guess, is it a private drive, or would that be the responsibility of the city to maintain?
It is a private drive.
Okay.
The streets in Chatham in this area, north of two-hundred-and-second, are all private drives. So the extension that you see there, the bulb of that cul-de-sac, will be completed out- the extension that you see there, the bulb of that cul-de-sac, will be completed out. The curb ends right there at the end of the straight section of the roadway. What's north of that is just a large paved area for turnaround. It would be cut down and curbed, and the drive that comes off of that into Jason's property would be a private driveway off of the area that's controlled by the HUA.
Okay. How does, how does their trash cans work when they want to bring their trash out to the cul-de-sac and leave their trash cans there for a week or two weeks or forever?
I don't know if the regulations with regard to the city, but the Chatham covenants and restrictions address the time period in which owner can leave rollaways in front. I think it's a 24-hour window.
Okay. And utility extensions for water and sewer and other services?
Both from the south, within the existing Ivy Ridge right away.
I assume grinder pumps.
The site where the homes are going to be located on these three lots are significantly elevated from the south. They don't anticipate having a grinder pump, but in the event they would, it would be private into the public sewer that exists in Ivy Ridge Drive.
And probably the last comment would be for the fire department to look at this in regards to fire access to these private, private residential properties, but I'll leave that up to the fire department.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
John, with the change, so there's no potential consideration of requesting from the state a curb cut or anything like that from State Road 38?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion this evening? Obviously, this is going to go in front of the APC and then come back to us over that's handled. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Ordinance 25-46, which is the Lantern Commons PUD Amendment 2. We have Lauren Gillingham-Tieg this evening for this presentation.
Sorry, this meeting went by really quick. Sorry. Hello, members of the council. Lauren Gillingham-Tieg, Community Development Department, here tonight to introduce the amendment to the Lantern Commons PUD ordinance. This is generally located the northwest corner of 161st Street and Westfield Boulevard. If you're familiar with that ordinance, it is the lower right-hand piece across the drive from the hotel that was approved earlier this year. This amendment would permit a proposed mixed-use development comprised of two four-story mixed-use residential buildings, several plaza spaces, and then a standalone restaurant anchoring the corner facing the roundabout. A neighborhood meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday, and the item will be in front of the Plan Commission for a public hearing at the August 4th meeting. Matt Skelton with Church, Church, Hiddle and Antrim is here to give a short presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, Lauren.
Good evening, members of the council. For the record, my name is Matt Skelton with Church, Church, Hiddle and Antrim, with offices at 116 North Union here in town. With me this evening from my office is Lisa Claghorn and also Phil Miltow, the owner developer of the site here. As Lauren mentioned, we have, where the proposed amendment before you is submitted to permit the development of a luxury, high-end, mixed-use development. The, here's our concept plan, and I'll walk through it in more detail here in just a moment. As you may recall, the original Lantern Commons, we're talking about this site right here, Area C, was originally zoned in 2021. The site was originally approved to permit more of a traditional suburban neighborhood scale of development. It was more vehicle-oriented, commercial node. One noteworthy change that's in the proposal that's before you this evening is that we have proposed to eliminate the drive-throughs that would currently be permitted on the site. That's just, that's not what the, this proposal will be. It will not include, it does not have a vehicular orientation. It has more of a pedestrian and alternative transportation focus. This is a copy of the old concept renderings that were in the original zoning. And this is part of the new proposal. The, as most of you know, the site is connected to a web of pedestrian, alternative transportation connections. To the, to the east, Natalie Wheeler Trail is along South Union Street. You have Cool Creek Park nearby to the south and somewhat into the east of the site. You have Liberty Park immediately southeast of the property. Westfield Boulevard Parkway, which we understand will be finished by the end of next year, extending all the way really up to Park Street, and then providing also easy access to the Monon Midland Loop, which provides alternative transportation circulation all the way around the 32-31 interchange. I'll just scroll through some of these here. The owners have worked extensively with the city administration, really for over, over a year now, with various iterations of this plan. As we started out, there was a plan put forth that was more in line with the concept that was shown to you from the original zoning. And in working with the city leadership, we were encouraged to densify the use of this property, to make sure we were utilizing it in a responsible economic development kind of manner. And so this is the product of that work that we are happy to share with you this evening. This results in a significantly higher level of investment over what was originally proposed. The original proposal would have generate, would have generated probably about somewhere in the neighborhood of $10 million worth of investment. And this proposal before you is in the neighborhood of about between 30 and 35 million. This is more in line with some of the city's interests in increasing the tax base while also providing better and more amenities for Westfield residents. And the, the development concepts outlined here are really pretty, pretty similar to some of the concepts that were just covered in your comprehensive plan presentation. So the city has, was pretty involved in helping us design our architecture to make sure that it was, it's enhanced in the quality and the character that is expected on an important gateway corner like this. The public, the public plazas in the area, which will be publicly accessible, there's three of them. They're, the number one here is, for lack of a better term, we're just calling it the Arrival Plaza currently, but it's really, they're all designed to create a pedestrian-friendly destination that promotes connectivity and community interaction. This Arrival Plaza includes a public art installation here, gathering space, also a covered artistically-designed sunshield area with integrated seating. And I'm going to skip ahead a couple just so we have some perspective views that available. And this just shows you what that park area will look like. It's hard to describe, but there's the integrated seating. And so that's, that's one of the areas. And then also the main plaza area, the central plaza area, is really designed to accommodate several outdoor seating opportunities for various uses and restaurants along here, along here. The, there are adjacent retailers and restaurants that would be located in this area, terraced seating. There's a, it's interesting, there's some topographic relief from here to here, and it really creates almost kind of this sunken step-down concept. And there's terraced seating down the stairs and also in this area here near the, near the turf area. And this is the synthetic turf area, and there's a video, large video screen for viewing as well. And then lastly, the northern plaza area, which is a little less dynamic. It's not as active of a place. It's, has an area here for dining. There's a dog park area located towards the northwest. And this is, these are seating areas that would have sunshields and, and it's best dune lighting or string lighting, if you will, for, for that ambiance. But as you can see, the intricate detail here and the thoughtful design has really resulted in a significant improvement over what might have otherwise been constructed here under the PUD as it exists today. The owners would like to begin work on the site as soon as possible, as soon as they are able to obtain the necessary approvals. And the, and just informationally, the, the development team has an interest in developing the property, the remaining property to the north of this site as well, if everything goes well with this project. So we're excited about this location and the opportunities that Westfield provides. We're happy to respond to any questions that you may have, and we look forward to continuing to work with the city as we move through the process.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, Councilor Wanniger?
Yes, I have a lot of questions. Kevin, start with you. In regards to this development and other developments around Westfield, we've talked about apartments, and we've heard there is a shortage of inventory within the city of Westfield for apartment complexes. You don't need to answer me tonight, but I'd like for you to come back with data and information supporting that because I drive by apartment complexes that are being built, and I see them sitting empty and not being occupied or, you know, not cars there and things like that. So I'd like to see a little bit more information in regards to that in the future, in regards to that portion of it. Mayor, for you, in regards to this intersection of South Union and the Westfield Boulevard, I've expressed my high disappointment in that intersection there. Indiott and other municipalities always are removing roads that bisect on a curve, and that one was built. That is not, that was not you, Mayor. That was previous councils and what was previously approved by previous councils in this design. Also, I think you had mentioned to me once before that this intersection was proposed to be a roundabout, or you're considering making that a roundabout at that location?
Yes, so a couple of things. First off, go back to what you asked. I've already asked Caleb to do a study of our occupancy rates in all of our, all of our apartments. So we're working on that. We'll get that to you soon as we have it. I will also add the comment about empty apartments. Yes, they are not all created equal. And garden style versus mixed use are two different things. Garden style is the development of old, and mixed use is the development of new. And I'd just like to compare it to like what Carmel is seeing with their, with their office corridor. If you look along US 31, their occupancy rate right now for businesses on 31 is very, very low. In fact, it's worse than downtown Indianapolis. But if you go into the, into midtown, where they have all the mixed-use developments and, and all the energy they've created down there, they have no occupant, they have 100% occupancy rate. So they're not all created equal, and I think what you're seeing here is a, is a type of development. It's a walkable, livable development, and that's really where the industry is pushing. In terms of the roads, John, are you still on, or did you give up and check out for the night?
I'm still here.
John, why don't you talk about this? Because I know you and I've had a ton of conversations about this intersection and roundabout versus non-roundabout. I know you've got a plan and a vision. Can you just kind of fill the council in real quick on that?
Yeah, sure. So we've looked at this. We feel comfortable with a left-in, right-out concept that aligns with Union Street for the time being. Long-term, we will connect Westfield Boulevard up from the north end of Lantern Commons to 169th Street, inclusive of a roundabout at 169th and Westfield Boulevard. We're also looking, as part of that project, we would look to potentially add another stop sign on Union and 171st, once the sort of arterial connection of Westfield Boulevard is complete. The idea there is to reduce traffic volumes on Union, reduce the speed on Union, and really encourage vehicular traffic to use the Westfield Boulevard as it is designed to be an arterial up from 161st Street into our downtown area. So I think the conflict of vehicles in the future at this intersection will be reduced because there'll be fewer on Union Street. But we do recognize that until that connection is made, there, there will be some volumes making that left-hand turn. We'll have to monitor it for safety. So that's, that's the long-term strategy with respect to this intersection specifically.
And what I would add is, I think the long and skinny of this conversation is there are many pieces that have to come together before we want to do a roundabout there. We may do a roundabout, very well could end up being that. It will be a very expensive roundabout if we do it. We've got tremendous infrastructure needs right now. Other intersections have a lot more traffic than this one that need attention with roundabouts. But we're staying open-minded, but let's let the development get completed before we overreact and do something that may or may not be needed. It may be needed. We're not saying no at this time. We're just simply saying, this was the vision day one. This is where the dollars have been spent for this vision. Let's see it through before we react and do something differently.
Yeah, my preference for that, that entrance there will, one, the right-in, right-out, that, the center island in there, that would have to extend further to the north because right now, the way it's designed, people would just come down South Union, go straight through that intersection into that development. Or they would do like they currently are doing on 161st Street, as they go across the Monon Trail, they're taking a left turn into that complex there, just because the island doesn't extend like that, or they drive over the top of it. So my preference would be no right-in, right-out. They can still go up to that other entrance and get access at that point, but that's just my opinion at this time. And Phil, I met with you and, and the attorney on this, and expressed my concern with that entrance. I told you I like the development, and you're dealing with a, a hard piece of property here. Kevin, this goes to another question, back to you. On that restaurant that's being proposed there, isn't there a restaurant being also proposed with the hotel? And is that restaurant in the hotel, or is it external? You probably know that question.
There's two.
It's external.
So the, it's another exterior restaurant?
Yes, it's a separate, it's in a separate building from the hotel, on the hotel property.
There's a restaurant inside the hotel, too, but yeah.
Okay. So my major concerns are that intersection and that, that right-in, right-out. I'd prefer no, no access at that point. If later it's designed differently, then that, that might be under consideration, but I'm just one vote.
And just, I think when, when we spoke, I, I mentioned this, there's nothing about what we're doing here that vests a road cut. I mean, this is, that's something that is typically dealt with at the detailed development plan stage. We've studied it enough because we know it's an issue of discussion. So I think there's some real intelligence and some thought that has gone through where we are right now, but there's still more discussion to be had, and we're not fully engineered yet either.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I have.
Any other comments this evening?
Yeah, I'll try to be extremely brief because it's so hot, but just take this opportunity to say I do agree with Councilor Wanniger here in regards to the majority of the infrastructure comments. And then I'll jump back to the apartments as well. I truly enjoyed our, our meeting last week. I think it was a wonderful discussion. And as I mentioned, I think it's a beautiful development as well. But for me, what hangs up is location. And yes, the whole apartment thing, because we have just up the street here, a whole bunch of apartments being built that are, yes, single-use, but nonetheless, what was previously going to be here, to me, I was content with it. But in regards to being a mixed-use development, again, I told you guys, I would love for this just to be in our downtown square area because it's just beautiful. But in particular, in regards to a downtown discussion referencing the earlier presentation, that, that would be just my overall rhetorical question that we'll all just have to ponder, is how big is our downtown area going to be? Because comparing to, not Carmel, because Carmel's the outlier with everything they've done down the, the Monon, but Fishers, Noblesville, Zionsville, their downtowns are about .5 radius, and kind of same right now with Westfield as well. That takes us down to about David Brown Drive just beforehand. So that's always where I've, I've thought our downtown kind of sits. So again, just something to ponder in the future of, you know, are we extending the downtown area or whatnot? Because just when I go back to the, the topic of apartments, I'm like, hey, this type of thing needs to be in our downtown, not in other locations. So, thank you.
Excuse me, councilors. Could I, could I take just a moment to address the, the comment about the development here extending the downtown? Because I just, I just want to be sure that we're looking at this area differently than we are downtown. When you look at development that's happening along major traffic corridors, like a state highway, you need to look at it differently than a downtown. We're going to end up with more developments along this area that are more dense because the value of the property is high, because there's a lot of traffic. There's a lot of
There's a lot of interest in retail because there's a lot of visibility, and people will be able to see these apartments. People will be able to see office buildings in this area, see the hotels. And because of that, it's really important that we are addressing the need to provide the appropriate amount of density to really create the atmosphere that you really need in order to make these places thrive. What we're hearing about the transition of the US 31 corridor to our south in Carmel is that the less dense developments are vacant. I read the other day that there's 24% vacancy in the US 31 corridor office spaces. As the mayor said, in the midtown area, 100% occupancy. The apartments in the midtown area have been near 100% occupancy since they opened. Developments like this are more similar to developments that are happening near US 31. Again, in Carmel, the bridges is a good comparison. You know, it has a kind of a combination of suburban and urban living. It's not large structured parking. You know, very similar to this, it has surface parking, it has walkability, it has these amenities that people want to have without having the density that we have in a downtown. The other thing that this area does that's really important is it ties us into SEP. SEP is one of our major headquarters here in the city. They moved here because they want to be connected to things. They moved here because they wanted a forever home. I talked with them extensively when they were talking about relocating here. For their employees to be able to live across the street and walk to work even further solidifies their ability to stay here long-term. For their employees that come here to work during the day to be able to walk across the street and go to a nice restaurant, or to pick up a quick salad or a quick sandwich for lunch and come back to their office, changes the way they do business. And I think that it's really important that we look at this entire US 31 corridor in that, in that framework. So I just wanted to be sure I had an opportunity to address that. Thank you.
Councilor Dart, I believe you had a question as well?
Yeah, I do, thank you. I don't want to beat a dead horse because the mayor has mentioned it and so has Kurt, but Kevin, as your team works on this study about multifamily housing in Westfield, I want to make sure that we also include the different price points or the categories of multifamily, whether it's stacked multifamily or townhomes, but what percentage of the multifamily units are affordable, affordable versus mid-price point versus how Matt described this project as luxury? I don't know how luxury is actually defined, but if it can be broke down that way, that's fantastic. But we also need to know of the existing units in the city, whenever they've been built, the existing units in the city, what is the occupancy rate for those existing number of units? And then can you tell us how many units are under construction? And then how many units have been approved but haven't been constructed yet? Because talking to a few council members, we both said, or a few of us have said that it seems like we've approved a lot of multifamily units, and they may not even come online for two or three years, but there's a lot in the pipeline. And while today we may be underpenetrated, when you add up all of those units, we may be saturated. So that's, I think, critical for me anyway to move forward with this project. Number two is that this project doesn't seem to have many amenities for the residents. And maybe that's designed that way, but you know, one of my pushes is to have amenities. You've got apartment complexes going up just north of this in that same, in the same Lantern Commons. Is this an opportunity for the developer to consider public pickleball courts for residents, for people that work at SEP, for hotel guests, and for those residents elsewhere in the city? We've been talking about this. We've been trying to find out where there's an opportunity to put these in. We need the land. We need obviously investment to make that happen, but there's a, there's a kind of a groundswell for public pickleball courts in the city of Westfield, and we don't have an answer yet, and maybe that's an opportunity to include them here.
Hey, John, this is the mayor. Give me a call sometime when you get back in town, we can talk about, we have a plan for pickleball courts and, you know, using park impact fees to do pickleballs here, pickleball courts here is not really what, is not part of our park vision, but I'm happy to walk you through what we're thinking around that because we do have a plan for pickleball.
Yeah, and like I said, that's kind of a passion point of mine, but this, even beyond that, Scott, this doesn't seem to have a lot of amenities other than a place to walk your dog and a place to sit.
And John, I probably did not do it justice in my presentation, but we should probably just talk offline. I'm sure everybody else would really like to go home. But I, this site is highly amenitized, and it's shown at a very, I mean, the scale of this probably just doesn't do it justice, but there's a significant amount of investment in public spaces here, and it's not just a place to sit. I mean, there's activity areas, places for community events. It's probably the most highly amenitized development of its kind in the city that's been approved.
Yeah, I'd like to learn more because I don't, I don't see it, but I appreciate reaching out.
Well, I'll do that.
Yeah, thank you.
So this, any other questions, comments this evening? This was introduction this evening. We'll go back to the APC as well. City Council comments, Councilor Wanniger, Finance Committee update?
Held Finance Committee meeting this afternoon, reviewed, had a presentation on some fight, or some reporting that we'll look into as well as with other vendors. That'll take us from a transition from the, from our current class to a Class II city. Also, we reviewed the appropriations and fund reports and balance reports and looked at anomalies associated with those. And then we got an update from Daniel Carey-Tolan on the budget process that is proceeding and should be brought to the council here shortly.
Thank you. APC updates, Councilor McCarty.
We didn't have a meeting.
Thank you very much. Great, great comment this evening. Mayor, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned, thank you.
I will be remote the rest of the year. I'll tell you that.
Until winter.
I'm not going to.